Okay, it's eight after, so we'll go ahead and get started. We are live now on YouTube. And we'll go ahead and get started as timely as possible and wait for the others to join, Inshallah. So we'd like to say good morning and Assalamualaikum to those that have joined us and to our YouTube platform, those that will join us. You're listening to Saturday Morning Lineup, Saturday Morning Taliyah. We're here every morning, 7:00 AM Eastern Time, for a new presentation of Saturday Morning Study Session, or Saturday Morning Taliyah. Our presenter is Imam Michael Sahir. When he can make it, he has a busy schedule and we hope that he will be with us this morning. But Inshallah, we will carry on in the event that he cannot make it. So we'll get started with our liability. The liability page. And the views that are expressed by the host and guest on their show are not necessarily the position of AM360 or the parent corporation, CWSC, the Community Wide Shura Conference. AM360 content is intended as a community service and is not designed to provide specific personal, medical, financial, or legal counsel, or other professional advice. And no liability shall extend to the host or hostess of AM360 or CWSC. We encourage you to seek an advisor for your specific circumstances. And Brother Mark, would you like to open up us up for the Fatihah? We will open up with the Fatihah. A'udzubillahim in shaytulumajin. Bismillahir Rahmanir Raheem, alhamdulillahi rabbil alameen. A'rafmanir Raheem, Malikiyamidin. Iyyaka na'buduwa iyya kinas ta'in. Ifti na'asarota mustaqim. Sarota ladina ananta alehim. Wa ghayburu maktubi alehim. Abdolin, amin. Again, we thank you for being here with us this morning. On this study session, we are studying from the book that you hear that you see on the screen. It is the commentary of selected verses of the Holy Quran, taken from the discussions of, from the documented teachings of Imam Wauf de Muhammad. Okay, and this is the book that we are studying from here on this program. So while we are, let's see. While we are waiting for others to join, we are going to listen to a lecture by Imam Rashad Abdul Salam. And this lecture is...
Would that be Imam Rashad Abdul Rahman?
Yes, thank you. Imam Rashad Abdul Rahman is the lecturer, and let's pull that up. And this is going to be, this should be the third lecture of Al Fatihah. Surah Al Fatihah, Those Who Earned Allah's Wrath and Strayed. But we have listened to the first two already, so we'll get started with this third presentation of Al Fatihah.
All right, we are live, alhamdulillah. We are going to be beginning here. All right, there it is. Let us begin. Bismillahir Rahmanir Raheem, alhamdulillahi rabbil alameen. Wassalatu was salaam ala rasoolihi al-kareem, Muhammad wa ba't. And I begin, I want to also begin with extending the greeting to those who are listening. Assalamualaikum. Today, we are, today is Wednesday, and this is our day for our Quran study session. We decided to go live a little bit earlier than usual yesterday. I think we went live around the same time, and I actually like this earlier time, you know. We've been going live normally at 8 o'clock in the evening, but I'm trying out something a bit new, a bit new. But the issue is for today, the main point is for today, we really want to bring to a conclusion our study of Suratul Fatihah. For this particular segment, on the Wednesdays, we like to study portions of the Quran, give thought to portions of the Quran. And for some time now, we've been in Suratul Fatihah because of my travel, leaving the country, leaving the city, going to other cities. I really haven't been here. And then I got sick a couple of times. So you know, it hasn't been as, I would say, consistent as I like, but alhamdulillah, we are here. And we, as I mentioned, we want to really bring this study to a close today. The first thing that we want to do is remind everyone to like, subscribe, share this channel with others. We're trying to grow. Praise be to Allah. We reached 11,000 yesterday, and we're seeing a trajectory for our channel, and we want to keep going in that direction. Also, if you want to support our channel, as always, I like to remind you all, you can support via Cash App. That's dollar sign Q S A N D L. Your support goes a long way. Also, we do have the Super Chats. I don't really call for them, but I do get people sending us Super Chats, you know, and we appreciate all of your support for keeping this work going. So Suratul Fatihah, let's start by doing a review of where we have been in the previous weeks and months. Suratul Fatihah, we know, is called Fatihatul Kitab. It is the opening of the book. That's the name of the surah given to it by our Prophet himself, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And there is also a report among several where he calls Suratul Fatihah Ummul Quran. So we have the expression Fatihatul Kitab, Ummul Quran. One means the opening of the book, the other means the essence, or the source, or the mother of the Quran. And we have been looking at the fact that what this implies is that the totality of the Quran, all of the various ayat, all of the various suwah or surahs, they are born out of Suratul Fatihah. If we take every ayah within Suratul Fatihah and extend them, we would come up with, or we derive what we have throughout the whole of the Quran. So that's what it means, the um, the um, the essence of the whole Quran, or the mother. The term um is not like walida. Walida is another term for mother. Um in the Arabic just means a source, that from which things come from. So it can mean mother, definitely. It does mean mother, but it also implies a source. The expression Fatihatul Kitab, the opening of the book, it suggests a lot of things, most important of which for our study, is the fact that this particular chapter, this particular surah, every verse within it is a key. It's like a master key, and it gives us the means to access the study of the Quran and something of the insight of the Quran. And we have students who have joined our Foundations of Al Islam program. And on Mondays, we go through the Quran. We have discussion on the Quran using Suratul Fatihah as a lens, based upon this tradition or this teaching of our Prophet. So with that general, and we've went over, this is review. So with that general understanding of the nature of this surah, we begin upon the position that the first ayah is Bismillahir Rahmanir Raheem, what is called the Bismillah. Translated, it means with Allah's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer. Now, there is a difference of opinion amongst the scholars as to whether or not this is an ayah of Suratul Fatihah. It is agreed, however, that the Bismillah is a part of the Quran, and it is to be recited with, before, or it precedes every chapter with the exception of the ninth chapter. There are, however, that's like, there are some differences there too. You have some reciters in the various riwayat, the narrations, or the ways that the Quran is recited. They will conclude one surah and go right into the other without the Bismillah. But it's still understood that we are beginning this particular surah or this chapter with God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer. In any event, we, that's the name of the surah given to it by our Prophet himself, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And there is also a report among several where he calls Suratul Fatihah Ummul Quran. So we have the expression Fatihatul Kitab, Ummul Quran. One means the opening of the book, the other means the essence, or the source, or the mother of the Quran. And we have been looking at the fact that what this implies is that the totality of the Quran, all of the various ayat, all of the various suwah or surahs, they are born out of Suratul Fatihah. If we take every ayah within Suratul Fatihah and extend them, we would come up with, or we derive what we have throughout the whole of the Quran. So that's what it means, the um, the um, the essence of the whole Quran, or the mother. The term um is not like walida. Walida is another term for mother. Um in the Arabic just means a source, that from which things come from. So it can mean mother, definitely. It does mean mother, but it also implies a source. The expression Fatihatul Kitab, the opening of the book, it suggests a lot of things, most important of which for our study, is the fact that this particular chapter, this particular surah, every verse within it is a key. It's like a master key, and it gives us the means to access the study of the Quran and something of the insight of the Quran. And we have students who have joined our Foundations of Al Islam program. And on Mondays, we go through the Quran. We have discussion on the Quran using Suratul Fatihah as a lens, based upon this tradition or this teaching of our Prophet. So with that general, and we've went over, this is review. So with that general understanding of the nature of this surah, we begin upon the position that the first ayah is Bismillahir Rahmanir Raheem, what is called the Bismillah. Translated, it means with Allah's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer. Now, there is a difference of opinion amongst the scholars as to whether or not this is an ayah of Suratul Fatihah. It is agreed, however, that the Bismillah is a part of the Quran, and it is to be recited with, before, or it precedes every chapter with the exception of the ninth chapter. There are, however, that's like, there are some differences there too. You have some reciters in the various riwayat, the narrations, or the ways that the Quran is recited. They will conclude one surah and go right into the other without the Bismillah. But it's still understood that we are beginning this particular surah or this chapter with God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer. In any event, we really took a look at what these two names of Allah mean. We didn't do so much discussion about the actual expression, Bismillah. But we looked at the two names of God, the two names of Allah, highly glorified as he mentioned in this first ayah. One is Ar Rahman, the other is Ar Raheem. And we identified the name Ar Rahman as referring to God. Some of the scholars, especially from a linguistic perspective, they say that Ar Rahman is related to the self of God. In other words, this name is implying that Allah, in his own self, or in his own reality, is merciful, is compassionate, is loving in an immense degree, to a greater degree than the human mind has the ability to even grasp. So he possesses love in mercy, compassion, to the greatest degree possible. In other words, Ar Rahman is describing himself. The way the term is used within the Quran, it does imply sort of this vast distribution or diffusion of mercy. But the implication is that that mercy that is coming from God, that is, it is Allah. He is merciful, and it is extended from him to his creation. Another way to put this, there's a hadith that has, I think it's very weak actually, but it says that Ar Rahman is God's mercy seen in the creation of the world, and Ar Raheem is his mercy seen in the condition or the state that comes after. What is understood, though this hadith is weak, it is understood that Ar Rahman, the name, Ar Rahman, refers to Allah's mercy displayed or manifested in the fact that he created everything. So the whole created reality, or just in our simplistic terms, the whole universe, is the means by which we come to know God as the merciful. He is merciful in his beneficence, and this is why we translated the merciful benefactor. Ar Raheem, on the other hand, notice both terms, Ar Rahman, Ar Raheem, convey or carry the idea of Rahman, mercy. The difference between the two is how that mercy is given or extended. So the first mercy is in his beneficence. The second mercy, as given in the Quran. Some of the scholars, and this is a very popular position, you will hear this a lot, they will say, and just students of Islam will say, Ar Raheem denotes Allah's mercy that comes to the believer. So whereas Ar Rahman is God's mercy in general, Ar Raheem is denoting a specific mercy, or a particular mercy that comes to the believer. As given in the Quran, another way to really understand this, and another way to really appreciate this, is that Allah's mercy, given in the term Ar Raheem, is the mercy that comes to his human creation specifically, after his human creation loses its way in the world. And this is really the language, or the understanding conveyed by the language of the Quran. Allah gives the human being, the whole world, to live within, and then Allah, because man is put into the world, he's given guidance, sometimes, yes. In most instances, he's given guidance. My mind is in two different places right now. But when he loses touch with the best of his own nature, or when he loses touch with divine guidance, Allah comes to him and saves him, and this is why we translated the merciful redeemer. A part of the connection here is that the Christians say that Jesus Christ himself, he is an expression of, or he is an instance of, or he is the redemptive mercy of God. In the fact, as the Bible says, God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son. So he comes as the savior to redeem man. This is a position that's outright rejected in the Quran. What Allah is establishing in this verse and throughout the Quran is that the same mercy, the same love, the same care, the same concern from God that calls for him to bring the world into existence and regulate everything in it, the same God is able to save his creation himself. He does not have to come in the form of a man. He does not have to send a human being that is also divine, and so on and so forth. Now, I don't want to go too deep into the particulars of that theology. He does not need to do that to save or to redeem his creation. As a matter of fact, throughout the scripture, even before the time of Jesus Christ, there is already evidence of the fact that Allah was redeeming, saving, lifting up man when he lost his way. So why now does he have to come in the Old Testament, I'm sorry, the New Testament, and disrupt, or making a radical change from the way that he has always been doing things? And this is one of the reasons why we read in the Quran that Allah says we will never find for his sunnah a change. There is no change in the sunnah of God. Allah, highly glorified as he, he created the world, and he made man sort of the crown of the world, the crown of creation, the highest created entity out of this whole reality that he made. Man has this freedom, and that freedom permits him to obey and disobey. And even when he disobeys, God's sunnah is to send him revealed guidance to bring him back. And if he doesn't come back, he falls. But Allah also reminds us that there's always a remnant, there are always a few who respond to the guidance. So that's the first ayah. With God's name, we begin reading the Quran in Allah's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer. Then we progress to the second verse. Alhamdulillahi rabbil alameen. All praise is due to the God, or Allah, the Lord of all the worlds. And we discussed how the term Rab, as used in the Quran, implies, or it refers to the one who takes a thing that is not fully mature, fully developed. It requires help. It requires assistance. It is not, it has not reached the full extent of its potential and capacity as a created thing. And he sees to it that it is protected, it is nourished, and it has everything that it needs so that it does reach the full extent, the full capacity of whatever it is that he put inside of it. Now, this is true, as he says in the Quran, of all the worlds. He is the one, like a parent, raises a child from absolute helplessness to independence. Allah watches over and cares for, and evolves, for want of a better term, in everything that exists other than himself, everything he created. And again, that's the general picture, but the specific picture goes directly to the human being. He evolves all of the worlds, and out of the worlds comes this man, the human being, starting with Adam, our first father, and Adam is the first step of a process that will eventually lead to Muhammad, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And peace be upon all the prophets. So the one who did that, who progressed the world, brought man out of the earth, as he says, Minha choleqnaakum, from it we created you. And the one who raised generation after generation, prophet after prophet, and he advanced the guidance, stronger and stronger, that is the Lord. Because through the natural world and through revelation, this is really the means by which even human life progresses. Because human beings are most importantly, the abstract, the soul, the morality, the intelligence, or the rational intelligence. These are the things that really make us human. We can look back at human beings for thousands of years, and we can see that our physical body has been pretty much the same, with slight differences perhaps. But overall, the same physical human being of today is the same physical human being of 10,000 years ago. But what we can also say is that the behavior, the understanding, the sensitivities, those things that are internal within the human being have been evolved, have been advanced. And the primary means by which we have advanced on this earth is by way of God's guidance. So Allah is rabbil alameen. And the reason why Ar Rahmanir Raheem is really repeated, so we say, Bismillahir Rahmanir Raheem, alhamdulillahi rabbil alameen, Ar Rahmanir Raheem. Or we can combine, alhamdulillahi rabbil alameen, Ar Rahmanir Raheem. The reason why that follows is because the two, Ar Rahmanir Raheem, the one who creates, the one who redeems, the one who puts man in the world and then restores man after he loses his way, this sort of dynamic, for want of a better term, this dynamic is really the means by which God evolves man within the world. If we look at the history of nations as given in the Quran and the prophetic narrations, the history of prophethood, we see that rise and fall of nation is accompanied by the coming of guidance. So we have that first mercy, that second mercy, and with these two, back and forth, for want of a better term, back and forth, or the expression of these two, this is what moves along the course of human history. And human history has a conclusion. We are not just in the universe, and we are not just in the world without reason, without a purpose. So what is the next ayah? Malikiyamidin, the ruler, or Malikiyamidin, according to some other recitations, the ruler or the king on the Day of Judgment. So notice, we have the idea of God's mercy that brought the world into existence, God's mercy that saves man when he loses his way in the world. These two together denote the movement of man down through time as a progressive life on this earth, and eventually his progress, eventually the revelation that God gives, the prophetic models that he gives. One day, we have to answer as to how we lived according to those models, how we lived according to that revelation, how we lived according to the mercy of God extended to us down through time. We have to answer to God as to how we made use of, or not make use of, that which he gave us. And that's what we call the day, or that's what is called the Day of Judgment, yamidin. Now, these are the four descriptions of Allah. It starts from God bringing the world into existence out of his mercy, and it ends with Malikiyamidin, with Allah concluding the world. And that's also out of his mercy, because we are told that in the judgment, those who have lived the life of righteousness, they will be the ones who have earned the garden. After we identify God by these four descriptions, the next thing that we say, but notice how the first half of the surah is really speaking about the reality of God. Though to understand, we can't see Allah directly. It's not permitted for us. We're not able to do that. That is not within our human grasp. No vision can grasp him, yet his grasp is over all vision. So I'm not looking at the self of Allah. We're looking at these names, and we were looking at how we understand these names through that which Allah does, you know. But the focus is God. The primary focus is God. The next part of Suratul Fatihah goes directly to man's relationship to that God, to God, to Allah. Now that we have identified you by these names, we say, you alone do we worship. Iyyaka na'abudu wa iyyaka nas ta'in. Our relationship to Allah, as he says in the Quran, Wama khalaqtul jinnawal insa illa liya'budun. And I have not created the jinn nor the human being except for my worship, for my service. And we know, we've discussed this, that the man was created to be a worker in the earth. That starts with Adam. Adam wasn't just put in the world, he was given a job. He was given a responsibility. He was given a degree of freedom. He was given a level of authority to perform a role in the world under Allah, and that stays with us today. We are to exercise in the same role that Allah gave to the first man, in the same role that is demonstrated most excellently or perfectly in the complete man, the perfect man, Muhammad. Praise and peace be upon him. So that's what our life is about. So God is, we see him. He's the one out of his mercy, brought this world into existence, gives us revelation and guidance and messengers, et cetera, progresses the world, and he will bring this world to a conclusion. Before the conclusion, we want to benefit from the guidance and live in the world according to the manner that he commands that we live. You alone do we worship. You alone do we seek for help. And what is the help? What is the help that we receive to show us how to worship him? It's answered in the next ayah, Ihdinas sira'tul mustaqim. And this is the last, this is what we left off with last. Guide us on the straight path. And we can see, again, to repeat something that I said, the path, the straight path, mustaqim. It comes from the word qama, istiqamo, the verb as used in the Quran means the effort, the struggle, on the part of the servant to be upright. And our Prophet, praise and peace be upon him, we spoke about months ago, when we were speaking about the Israul Mi'raj, he ascends the seven levels of the heaven. the seven levels of the heaven. And the Mi'raj is really giving us a picture of Siratul Mustaqeen. Because he meets at each level of prophets, starting with Adam, the first prophet, and concluding with Ibrahim. Both of these prophets, Adam, he's considered our first father in Islamic knowledge. And Ibrahim, he's our second father in Islamic knowledge. So he goes from the first father to the second father, level one to level seven. And then our prophet himself, he, after going up the levels, he comes back down to establish the Ummah or in complete the work, complete his mission, part of which is establishing the Ummah. So this is why it says, the path of those upon whom you have bestowed your favors. That's Ibrahim. That's Musa. That's Jesus Christ. That is all of the prophets in that tradition, in that ascension that we see in the Hadith of our prophet and in just the history of, of the scripture. Those who have received God's guidance, on the one hand, are also those who have been ascending in moral virtue, in ethical virtue, in perception, intelligence, scientific insight, et cetera. This is, these are the prophets. This is why our prophet said, prayers and peace be upon him, the learned or the inheritors of the prophets. And it's important to understand that in our tradition, one is not considered learned unless he has or she has good character. So one of the companions, he, i- i- it's recorded in Bukhari where he asked the question, who are the learned? And the answer given is those who practice what they know. So the, 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 those who follow the prophets, those who inherit the prophets, these are the ones that receive the favors of God. And this is just history, even until today. You know, we don't like to think about it this way because of our political views. And, and for want of a better way of putting it, we have prejudices, uh, not all of us, but many of us. But we forget that this really is a society, the Western world, in all of its beneficial aspects, is the product of the Judeo-Christian tradition. Not secularism, not atheism. The secularists, the atheists, they didn't produce anything of lasting value for this Western society. These Western nations were Christian nations with the presence of Jews in them. And prior to the Judeo-Christian West leading the world, it was the Muslim world. That, that's very clear. The Muslims were leading for about 1,000 years. I mean, that's a real, that's, uh, uh, almost 1,000 years. I mean, that, that's, that's a, a broad span of time. We were in Spain for 500 years. And the majority of that time, we're talking about science, civilization, again, ethics, politics, industry. The great advance of the world was brought about by the people who were following the way of Ibrahim. So what am I saying? If we really look at the world in this, in this, really before what we call modern time, because modern time is technically like after the 1500s. If we look at the world from medieval until present, it's been the descendants of Abraham who have been the leaders of the world. And it has been the descendants of Abraham or Ibrahim Alaihis Salam that have opened up the world. And they have opened up the abundance within the world. Mathematics, astronomy, medicine, et cetera. The Muslims advanced that. And then the Christians picked it up, the Jews picked it up after the Muslims and advanced it too. So it's very clear from the historical record that those who had followed the way of, the way of the prophets and the way of revealed scripture, they were those who God favored. And this really goes back even into the time of scripture. As we referenced, Suleiman, Solomon, and, and, uh, the, the followers of Abraham, period. The path of those upon whom God favored. Now, this brings us to the final part of the, of the Surah. So we say, God, we identify Allah in these four descriptions. We ask for his guy, uh, we, we say we, we, we only serve him, seek his help. We ask for his guidance, we, on the path, and we identify the path that that guidance takes us on. We identify it as the path of those whom receive God's favors. In that connection, we also, in this Surah, this Surah also points to two groups who deviated from the straight path. Not those who have earned your wrath or those upon whom wrath has come down. Cause it doesn't really say your wrath. We translate it like that. But Ghairil Maghdub just means not those or unlike the ones who received wrath, Alaihim, upon them, Walat Dali, nor those who have gone astray. This has been traditionally understood, uh, to be the Jews and the Christians. Clearly, from what I just mentioned, leading up to this part of the ayah, the last ayah, there is a Hadith, uh, in Tirmidi, uh, with, with, with weakness to it, but it says, those who have earned the anger or the wrath, the Ghadab, are the Jews. And those who were led astray are the Christians. And this is a part, this is sort of how it's understood that the companions understood this, this, this expression, and the early generation understood this expression. And understand now, it's important. I'll give you two examples. Maghdub, the term comes from Ghadab. Allah says in the Quran, for example, in Suratul Baqarah, he says, and when you said, oh Moses, we will not, we cannot be patient with one kind of food. So call on our behalf, your Lord, that he bring forth for us from what the earth grows. I just lost my place. From, hold on one second. But let me, let me go back to it though. He says, so bring to us what the earth grows of its herbs and its cucumbers and its garlic and its lentils and its onions. This is what they're asking, what God, remember, he was sending down Mana wasalwa, Mana in quails, as it's translated and as is given in the scripture. They were saying, we can't be satisfied with this one food. Bring us what the earth grows. Musa responded, it says, Allah says, he says, will you exchange or do you want to exchange? Are you seeking to exchange that which it is lower in value for that which is better? Go down to any city. Surely for you is what you ask. Now, what's important is that the term Misra is the same word for Egypt. So most of the time, it's translated, it's understood, go to any town, go to any city. But, but it's not Qaria, not go, that's another word for town. The reason why it's saying go to Egypt, Misra, a town, but the word that's used is Egypt is because what they were asking for, remember, they had just come out of Egypt. So what they were asking Moses to give them was based upon what they had experienced in Egypt. So here we have Musa Alaihis Salam, leading these people to freedom, to true liberation in their life under God, on their own, the promised land, as is given in the language of the scripture. Leading them to that, out from under oppression. The oppression that they were suffering under. But here, in the midst of them being led into their own destiny as a people, they were still wanting and desiring that which they had in Egypt, even though Egypt was an oppressive environment. This is the point that's being made. So Allah says, that, that like, uh, Villa is like humiliation and misery were, they, they were struck with it. They were met with it. And they earned the Ghadab from God. That's the part I wanted to get to. So here in the Quran is made clear that they earned Allah's Ghadab. So they're Maghdub. But the point that I really want to, to emphasize is the reason why, which we just discussed. They earned God's wrath, not because they were innocent. Mind you, they were with Musa. This is after the Exodus. Meaning that they had saw that he defeated the sorcerers or the magicians of Pharaoh. They saw that he split the sea and walked them across on dry land. They saw how the Pharaoh and his army, or Pharaoh, the army of Pharaoh at least, was drowned. They saw this. They saw how Allah was giving them food from the heavens, Mana in quail. And with all of that, they were still not content with that which Allah was blessing them with. They were, on the contrary, asking that God give them something other than that which he was giving them. So this is why they earned Ghadab. This is one of the reasons why. In another part of the Quran, Allah says, it says, evil is what they have traded or sold their souls by. In that they reject faith in what Allah has revealed. It's like, uh, begrudgingly or jealous, uh, in a spirit of jealousy. So they, 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 they reject what God has revealed in this, in this instance, speaking of the Quran. And they're envious, jealous that Allah sends down from his bounty, from his grace upon whomever he wills from his servants. The expression is given again. So they earn upon themselves, they draw upon themselves wrath upon wrath. In this instance, the wrath, the Ghadab, the wrath or the anger of God comes upon them because they reject the guidance. But they're not just rejecting the guidance in a general sense. They have the guidance. They know what guidance looks like. And Allah says elsewhere in the Quran, they were praying for the guidance. But when it came to the one or to someone that they themselves were not in approval of. And here Allah mentions they were jealous. And there was a grudge, for want of a better term, based upon this jealousy, they rejected it. That's why they earned the anger. And mind you now, the language of this, of, 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 uh, uh, this description here, as is given many times throughout Suratul Baqarah, as well as other places in the Quran, it really mirrors the language that describes Iblis. Because Iblis was the leader among the angels, but Allah was raising up this new man, Adam, in the earth to be the Khalifa. And Iblis is the one that saw himself worthy of the great station that Allah gave to Adam. And as a consequence, he rejected Adam and he decided to work against Adam, upon him be peace. There's a similar pattern now, being described within this Surah and throughout the Quran of those who saw themselves as the people who are to be the leaders on the earth. And they rejected the prophet, they rejected the message of the Quran because of the fact that the prophet himself, prayers and peace be upon him, was lifted up as the leader for, for, for the mankind and the Quran as the, as the last book. So because of that rejection, and these are people who know they earned God's wrath. So as for example, Imam Al Ghazali defined the Maghdub, it's more general. The, the, the direct reference, we can see like from the text, looking at the Jews and the Christians, et cetera. The Maghdub, if we abstract the reading, if we take the reading and make it more abstract, it means those who had guidance, knew the guidance, knew the truth, but still rejected it. That's what it means. Now, what's important for us to understand as Muslims is that this is not just a Quran-based position. If you were to read the Old Testament, you will see prophet after prophet dealing with the same issue. This is not something unique to our source. This is something that's just in scriptural sources, period. Not all of the people of the book, not all of the children of Israel, but there was a select group of them time and time again, from the time of Musa, upon him be peace, all the way the time to the time of Christ Jesus. And in between, every time guidance came, they rejected it. So they earned God's wrath. And a part of Allah's wrath, as explained in the scripture that came before, was that they would be expelled from the land. And we know that that happened twice. Who are the Dali? As we mentioned, it is, it is, uh, referred to as, as the Christians. But it's important to understand that the Dali are not always, as given in the Quran, they're not always consciously, or I would even say maliciously, guilty of rejecting truth. For example, Allah says in Suratul Duh, that he says of Prophet Muhammad before, peace be upon him, before revelation, and we found you astray and we guided you. So the term, the, the, the term has several, uh, implications, for want of a better way of putting it. The Dali, as it's understood, these are those who were aiming for the truth, but they missed it. They missed the truth. Most people in, I, I, I can't say most people, but when I hear a lot of Muslims speak about Christians, I don't hear this sensitivity. I don't hear this objectivity in our study. If we un, if, if, if we follow the way the matter is presented to us in their own source and how it's given in the Quran, we forget that Jesus Christ was sent, upon him be peace, he was sent as a messenger to the children of Israel. He was sent as the Messiah. He's Masih Isa Ibn Maryam. He is Jesus the Christ, which is the same as Messiah, the son of Mary. That's how he's given in the Quran. He is the Christ for them. The children of Israel were waiting for, they were anticipating a leader that would restore the kingdom of the Jews that was established under the leadership of David. And what their book says and what our book confirms is that they rejected Jesus Christ. So in large part, the majority of the Jews never became followers of Jesus Christ. What happens in the history, because remember, the Roman Empire had authority over Palestine. And they had authority over Syria. They had authority in Egypt. They had authority in this region at that time. The Romans. And the Roman Empire was not just made up of people from Italy, it was comprised of a number of Europeans. What happens is that the apostle Paul, who was a rabbi, and he claims, and the book of Acts is written of him, he makes the claim that Christ manifested himself to him and essentially gave him his ministry, told him to start his ministry. But what is unique about his ministry is that his ministry is not so much to the Jews, who are the ones who uh, were the first recipients of the message of Jesus Christ. And they were the ones to, primarily, not all of them, but a good amount, the majority rejected Jesus Christ. His mission was to the Gentiles, the Romans, the Europeans. The Europeans didn't have a tradition of scripture like the Jews did. They were only the ones that were in Palestine and in the Middle East. They were only there as representatives of the empire, but the empire was off in Europe. It was headquartered in Europe. But the apostle Paul makes the decision to go. He's not the only one, but he's the main one. He's the main pen writing in the New Testament. He makes the decision to carry the message of this new understanding of Christianity. He is considered by the church, the first theologian of Christianity. He takes Jesus Christ, the prophet sent to the children of Israel, and he reforms, or he packages the, the message of Christ all over again. And he gives this new message of who Christ is and what Christ represented and the relation of Christ to the Jews and to the Gentiles, et cetera. And he goes and he spreads it amongst the Europeans. The Gentile nations, the early churches. So what am I saying? If we approach the issue from the perspective of, I would say, scholastic or academic integrity, we would have to say that many of these in, in Constantinople, where the early church was, 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 was headquartered, in Rome, in, in, in other places of the Gentile world, North Africa, they never really had the true message of Jesus Christ. They had the, the, the gospels that were written after Paul. Paul comes and gives his theology, and then the gospels are written, the gospels as we have them today, they're written after Paul. So what they received, what the Europeans received, they thought was the message of Christ. And what did they read in that? What did they discern or derive from that message that they thought was the message of Christ? Notice in the New Testament, Jesus Christ never marries. He never marries a wife. He never has children. He never really engages in the activity that we would call in today's terminology, social, political, whatever else, activity. So this is why it's important to understand, for example, when our prophet, praise and peace be upon him, says things like, or is reported to have said, you know, "To marry is my sunnah." This has ramification for serious issues in religion. And our prophet, praise and peace be upon him, he was the leader of armies. He led armies. He was a political leader, he was a husband, he was a father. So we see him in all of these dimensions of social life. But of Christ Jesus, they don't see that, as he's given in the gospel. Now, you know that's rejected in the Quran. Allah says that he did not send any but men who had wives and walked through the marketplace, et cetera. So even that presentation of Jesus Christ, we don't accept in Islam. So these Europeans who are uneducated in the Judeo, in the Jewish tradition, but they were educated in the pagan tradition, they're reading this presentation of Jesus Christ, and they see in him a man that rejects the world. So they come to the conclusion that to follow the way that God wants for them to follow, they too have to reject the world. They too have to become men who reject women, who reject children, who reject the social life. And just as Jesus Christ is really seen as fasting and devoting himself completely to the will of God, they see themselves as also having to do that in order to be on the path that Christ Jesus left for them. And if you read the language of the writer Paul, as he presents it, he really presents Jesus Christ in a way that led them to become monks and hermits, so on and so forth. That's why until this day, even the leaders in the Catholic Church, they don't get married. Men and women, the nuns, the priests, they don't get married. Because in their mind, according to how they read the scripture, as it was given to them, that's not what you do to follow the way of Christ. So the Darlene have to be, this term has to be understood in this broad context. These are the ones who received what they thought was the guidance, but they missed the mark. It wasn't the true guidance. They were given a misrepresentation of who Jesus Christ was. They were given a misrepresentation of the true gospel, the Injil, as Christ, alaihi salam, the Messiah communicated it. And they came to the wrong conclusions. So they lost the way. In other words, Dullah implies those who were seeking guidance, but they didn't have the correct knowledge. They were seeking understanding, but they didn't have the correct light before them. So this is how Surah Al Fatihah concludes. Guide us on the straight path, not those who have earned your wrath, not those who have received the guidance, the correct understanding, and yet deviated consciously, and not those who have lost the guidance or never had contact with the guidance in the first place and made major errors. Protect us from these two extremes and keep us in the balance. And this is why the next surah, as I've mentioned really some time ago, the next surah is Surah Al Baqarah. And Surah Al Baqarah has as its main focus, the children of Israel. And then after Surah Al Baqarah, it goes to Surah Ali Imran, excuse me. And it has as its focus, the Christians, with the beginning of the church among the Jewish people, and then progressing out of them to just the church as we have it today. So where Surah Al Fatihah ends, Surah Al Baqarah begins, Surah Ali Imran begins. So this is the doorway, this is the key that opens up access to the Quran. Okay, so with that, we conclude. This didn't take as long, this didn't take, yeah, okay, so let me look at some of these comments. This didn't take as long as I thought it would, which is good, because I really like to stay, what do you call it, half hour, forty-five minutes. So someone said, no, Iblis was a jinn. I said he was a leader amongst the angels. If I said angels, I was just talking fast, that's a mistake. He was a jinn, that's clear in the Quran. He was a leader among the angels, he was among the angels, but he was a jinn. And we'll talk about that another time, inshallah, so just to be clear. So in the coming weeks, now that we have concluded our study of Surah Al Fatihah, inshallah, in the coming weeks, we will now take up various topics within the Quran. But also, we want to look at these topics, we want to look at these subjects in their relevance for the world that we live in today. The Quran is a living book, the Quran has a living message, the Quran is a light, it is a guide for all times. So, oh yes, no problem, no, no, by all means, ask questions, brother, that's fine. So when we, in the next coming weeks, as we continue in our Quran study sessions, I want you all to know that that's the direction that we're going to be going in. And I am, I do plan on starting early. It's cloudy where I am now, here in Georgia, so my light, I see it's a little shiny here. And plus I have shade butter on my face, so it makes me shine a little bit. But just know that that's where we're going. So I thank you all, as always, if you all have, let me put my email. If you all have questions, or you have topics that you think should be addressed. It's Quran Study and Leadership, which is the name of our institute, at gmail, gmail.com. If you all have questions, suggestions, but questions really, by all means, we welcome that. But inshallah, I pray you all have an excellent evening. Enjoy this warm weather, I hope it's warm where you are. And God willing, we may even go live tomorrow. But I'll see you all soon, assalamualaikum.
Okay, that concludes Imam Rashad's presentations on Surah of Fatihah. Does anyone have any discussion that they would like to make on what you heard so far this morning? You know, my understanding of Al Fatihah has definitely been broadened through listening to his presentation. Does anyone have any comment? Okay, three, one, four, from the STL. Go right ahead, mic is open. Unmute yourself and go right ahead with your comment.
Yes, assalamualaikum, Sister Manera, Mark Shahi. Yes, yes ma'am. I want to thank you first for, this was a good opportunity to play part three of Al Fatihah. And I think in the three parts of Al Fatihah, it only just shows how much is actually in that, in Al Fatihah. So we can see how it is, um, um, Al Katab, that is the mother of the book. It is the essence of the whole of the Quran. You know, I think that's very, very important to see it being the opener or the opening. It being the master key for all the themes and the subjects that are addressed in the Quran, we get that in Al Fatihah. You know, now he didn't go so much in terms of the themes, such as Al-Raqman and Al-Rahim, when we're reading the other ayats, the Sures and the ayats in the Quran. But everything that thus follows Al Fatihah, after you really learn Al Fatihah, you'll be able to relate it back, relate it back to the first Surah in that regard. When you see in terms how Allah points us to the natural world, the natural creation, the universe, in terms of what it is that he has created, that is a benefit. There is a benefit to the creation, but specifically for the human being. You know, that's very, 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 very important. And then we'll have Sures and ayats that are showing how the human being down through the age of time have lost their way and has gone astray. And then we'll see that second mercy, Al Rahim, the most merciful Redeemer. And I think it was very, very important, you know, what Imam Rashad Abdul Rahman brought up and brought out, because we know that Christ Jesus, you understand, was not from the very beginning, not from the very beginning. So you had human beings that was here on earth. So I mean, that's another way to look at the misconception and perception that he was a manifestation of redeeming the life, of saving the life. Now, yes, he was, he was a word, he was a sign, and he represented the spirit. But all the prophets and messengers that had preceded, you understand, they brought the word of God. You know, revelation that gives the guidance, the direction, and the correction for the time that they were in. So you start with Adam. When Adam slipped, became unconscious, you understand, and was deceived, what Allah said in the Quran, when he met with a word from his Lord. Then, when he did, he came back to the conscious state, and he repented. And then he got back on the Seratul Musa King. Well, this is repetitive even today as we speak. When the human being slips and becomes unconscious, the word of God still comes and it redeems or saves the human being, you know, in that regard. So that theme is repeated over and over and over and over again. So it's the beautiful thing in terms of the beginning, the first three ayats, as Imam Muhammad has taught the students, and as far as I'm concerned, his prior student was and is Imam Rashad Abdul Rahman. As a matter of fact, I can even say this, that Imam Darnell, and I was present, Imam Darnell Karim, he conveyed this to us. One class, the Imam had finished teaching, and he gave the mic to Imam Rashad Abdul Rahman. And he came and sat, as Imam Darnell Karim said, by him. And if you ever been around Imam, he gets in a comforted position, kind of sloths down in his seat a little bit, put his hands behind his head. And Imam Darnell Karim said, he leaned over to him and said to him, he said, "I can relax now." He said, "You can relax?" He said, "Yes, I can relax now." He said, "You see that brother up there?" He said, "He's got it, he's got it, he's got the message." What it was being taught in the class, he's got it. And we've seen the dedication and commitment by Imam Rashad Abdul Rahman as he continuously moved around the country and out of the country in terms of taking this teaching, the Tafsir, the clear explanation of Imam W. Dean Muhammad, not only here in our community, the community Imam W. Dean Muhammad, but around the world. That's very, very important to note in that regard. And when you listen to him, you hear the clarity, the clarity in that, the insights of Imam W. Dean Muhammad in that. Yeah, so I could say a lot more in terms of being a student for years in the class and all, and being a student of the Quran and of Imam Muhammad. But I think that it should be incumbent upon all of us, as you have played this, and thank you for doing that, the importance of the Surah, that if you make your five salats, you're at least reciting that seventeen times. So now, you understand, with better understanding of Al Fatihah, when you're reciting it, whether it is, whether it's solid or whether it is not solid, you will have even a clearer understanding in terms of what it is you're saying. And that's why we said, take it, take it slow, take it real slow. And you know, on Thursday morning, Brother Henry, Haseeb and myself, we are on Al Fatihah in that regard. So take it real slow, and what it is that we have been saying before, maybe say from Yusuf Ali, or Pickthol, or Muhammad Assad, the different translators, and began to, to begin to say it or recite it as Imam Muhammad has given it to us, it's going to make a lot more sense to us. I'll stop there. Thank you so much, Sister Manera, for actually doing this, it's an excellent Taliyah and class to be in. And I'm letting people know, you should be tuning in, all of us that do tune in, we should love for our brothers and sisters what we love for ourselves. Assalamualaikum.
Waalaikum assalam.
Waalaikum assalam. Salaamualaikum.
Waalaikum assalam.
The latest here just making sure I'm tuned in here.
Yes, you are, loud and clear.
Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. So very excellent presentation, Al Fatihah, Abdul Rahman and Mark Shahi. Good reminder, explanation. Yes, so we're looking forward to the hour nine thirty.
Thank you.
Alhamdulillah, assalamualaikum.
Waalaikum assalam. Sister Mira, Sister Mira, you're up next, and then Sister Martha.
Assalamualaikum, Sister Mira Muhammad Shahi. You know, alhamdulillah, Mark actually said some of the things I wanted to say, and I concur on the comments that he made. This is the first time I've gotten up this early and tuned in to the program. And I know it's like Allah was leading me, because once I got up, I started getting busy around the house. And he was like, no, just see what's on Zoom this early. And I'm so thankful that he allowed me to do that. And I've learned so much in such a short, little time. And I can appreciate Brother Rashad, because he's from Chicago as well as I am. And I remember when Imam was given, first started giving the classes. And he just was at that point allowing just the youth. And then at some point, he allowed the older adults to come in. Well, of course, a lot of us, we didn't have that stick-to-it-ness that it took to, you know, to be patient and learn. And I just happen to be one, because I was so busy in my life, raising my children, working, so on and so forth. But I'm so happy to be able to listen to Imam Rashad, because I can appreciate who he, you know, who he is, and the knowledge that Imam Muhammad gave him. And now he's, you know, teaching, you know, in so many different aspects. And we can look at our youth, and you know, Imam Muhammad said, give him a good future. And we can see in young people like Brother Rashad. Matter of fact, I knew his parents before he was born here in Chicago, him and his, I and his mother, good friends. Matter of fact, I saw her yesterday at Juma. So it's just a blessing for Allah to show, to let us see, you know, the product, the product of the fruits of our labor, our labor. And us to, as older adults, to really listen and comprehend what they're saying and appreciate that. So I'm just so thankful. Thank you, Manera, for having me here. And now that I know, you know, that I can get on this early, inshallah, I'll continue to do that. Thank you, assalamualaikum.
Waalaikum assalam, we're happy that you're here. And we're all enjoying this learning session, alhamdulillah. Sister Martha, the mic is yours.
Thank you, thank you so very much. A'ulubu lahi min ashayta on the regime, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Seeking refuge with Allah from this Shaytan, the rejected enemy of mankind. I'm saying that out loud because for our listeners that may not know that when we say it silently, that we do do that. And with Allah's name, the merciful benefactor, merciful redeemer. All for the effect of my connection this morning. Thank you, Manera, and greetings of peace to everyone that's listening now and later. Martha Nyla Williams Abdullah calling from St. Petersburg, Florida. Immediately, as our dear brother Imam Rashad was, Abdul Rahman was speaking about the Abdul Rahman was speaking about, uh, the history connection, making the connection. So that we could, uh, all walk through those years somewhat. Uh, and, and see how the misleading, you know, it's like you're walking down a path. And you go and you get to a why in the pathway perhaps, or a try area. But either way, you have to make a choice, a decision to go in one direction. And so when he spoke of the foods and, and, uh, and then the indication, you can go to any city. But the word that was used, you know, as, as he said, was misery. Um, but we can, I'm sure he's going to go back to that, uh, to, to make it clear that it's not the towns, uh, per se. But to any pathway, we can, we can choose any pathway that wouldn't necessarily lead us directly to understanding our relationship with the Creator. And so when he began to speak about, uh, Christ, Jesus, Alaihisalam, upon him be peace. You know, now my mind is going to his mother. When we speak of the mother of the book, um, Ummul Kitab, uh, that, that, uh, the, uh. The, the, the Al-Fatiha that opens us up and, and that, that of course includes. You know, our, the symbolism, the symbolic washing up, getting ourselves prepared. But what are we preparing is our mind. And I couldn't lose that thinking, that thought pattern, that, okay, our mind, our mind. That's where we're eating, that's where we're, uh, connecting, that's where we're thinking with our relationship with Almighty God. So in thinking of it as the mother, then my mind went to, uh, the pointing to his mother. Meaning Jesus, Alaihisalam, and the message that came with that, that he's the son of Maryam. But, but the more we, uh, connect with the word that's used for son and the word, the name Maryam. Uh, it includes being able to see, uh, and, and see, you know, we say, uh, we read. And I, I don't want to, um, take anyone's mind off the path, but I'll say, Rayya. Truly, often we read in Quran, Rayya, Rayya, Rayya. Have you seen, have you seen, have you seen, or do you see, do you see? And so hearing that Maryam, Rayya, you hear that and you, and we say, uh, that there was a look to the mother. And so the message is in the mother, and I'm bringing it right back around to the Al-Fatiha. As being the compilation, fully, everything in there, when we go into it, it opens up. And there's so much knowledge, revelation wise, in it to guide us. So I'll stop right there. Thank you so much, Amir, Manera. Again, Amir, alhamdulillah, assalamualaikum.
Waalaikum assalam. Okay, and, uh, the next person with their hand raised, unmute yourself, that's three, one, four. Uh, Brother Marcus back with us, go right ahead.
No, I, I never did, I'm sorry, I never, uh, I never did take myself out the queue. But I'm, um, actually enjoying all the commentary that everybody's making. And, um, maybe say a new found appreciation and value for the Sura. Usually that we learn first, matter of fact, the Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. Said that, uh, it validates your Salat, it validates your Salat. So to be able to make Salat even in the, uh, 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 in the very beginning. Is to learn the Al-Fatiha, and that's what usually we learn first and foremost. Uh, but with the insight that Imam Muhammad has given, uh, to us to look at it. You know, and this is just, um, uh, Ummul Al-Kitab, the mother of the, the book. But he also taught us in the class that this is not the only book. It's also in terms of opening up our consciousness in the Bible. Yes, Al-Fatiha opens up that book too, and we, it's spoken of in the Quran, the people of the book. You know, throughout Quran, it's, it's saying that. And then Imam Muhammad talks about the big book, the big book, which is the natural, the natural world, the natural creation or the universe. And this came and preceded even revelation, it came from the books of the Bible. There's many books of the Bible, you know, start with Genesis, Exodus, and all the way through the Book of Revelation. It preceded the Quran. So this was being given from that perspective, but if you're listening very closely. It was, it's addressing, um, the misnomers, uh, the misconception and perception. When things, when revelation prior to the Quran was changed. It, the, the Quran becomes a correction, but those things was changed, a confirmation. For those things that was revealed to the various prophets and messengers, the Quran confirms that. And it's a completion of revelation as Muhammad the Prophet is the finality of the prophets. Not the final in terms of messenger, messenger, but the finality of the prophets. And then one last seed that's very, very important that we are teaching in regards as students. That Imam Muhammad said this, it is commentary, the whole of the Quran is commentary on biblical scripture. Very, very important. You know, if we have relatives and we're just having a conversation with them. That, you know, it helps them to understand the religion of Christianity as he was speaking about, about Paul. And what it was that Paul actually put in the, in Jill, the, the, um, the New Testament. I'll stop there, but I, um, I'm going to make sure that I press start and I take my hand down and, and start six, uh. Uh, and just listen. Thank you so much, Sister Manera, you know, for hosting this and, and everything. So each week we, we get something, um, that is beneficial to all of us. Thank you. I appreciate that. Assalamualaikum.
Waalaikum assalam. Imam, uh, Imam Sahir wasn't able to join us this morning. Uh, pretty much due to just exhaustion. So Insha'Allah, he says he pray he could be back here with us again next week. So I'm going to, uh, ask Imam Kareem Hamid. Would you be able to help us out this morning and continue the reading, uh, in the book? The commentary of selected verses of the Holy Quran. Imam Kareem, are you with us?
Yes, assalamualaikum to everyone.
Waalaikum assalam. Okay. All right, so while, while we're getting prepared to transition and for Imam Kareem to get set up. We are going to, uh, transition with this song, uh. Be thankful. Alhamdulillah, and I'm going to make sure I share my screens so we can hear the song. Uh. Alhamdulillah, and we are thankful, we are thankful. Uh, before we start, Imam Kareem, we have a hand raised. Uh, Hadj Lada, welcome to the show, assalamualaikum. Unmute your mic and go right ahead with your question or comment, please.
Yes, ma'am, alhamdulillah, assalamualaikum, everyone. Um, this is my first time on this program here this morning. Alhamdulillah, I was able to listen to it. I caught it at the very, very end. But I want to know who sings that song, and it's so touching. And I want to know where I can get it from. Oh.
Okay.
The song that just went off.
Yes, right on YouTube, and, uh, Abdur Rahman Hatim. Uh, is the singer, uh, him and the group, the, and, and, uh, Inspirators. Abdur Rahman Hatim. Uh, so you can.
Hatim H.
H A T I M.
Okay. Do, repeat that name again?
Abdur Rahman. Yeah, I have it on screen. If you see your screen, you can see the spelling of it.
Oh, okay, okay, alhamdulillah. Um, if you can put it in the, in the text, because I don't, not in front of a pencil or anything, and I'm looking right now for something. Yikes, in a pencil. Also, alhamdulillah, I caught a little bit of it, but what I, uh, understand that you all were talking about their Fatihah. Do you know what happens to me when I read the Fatihah to a non-Muslim? In Arabic, I can, I can recite it, but then once I translate it to English, I begin to cry. I don't know what it is, but I begin to cry. This, this is just so beautiful. I want everyone to know that, that, that Sura.
Yes, it is, it is, and it's, uh, it's, it's very rich. And we pray for ourselves, we also pray for the community in Al-Fatiha. And basically, uh, uh, mankind, we're, we're praying for in Al-Fatiha as well. So it has so much depth in Al-Fatiha and, uh, seeking Allah's guidance. And not trying to manage this life without Allah. So it's, uh, I have added that to the chat. So, so much in Sura of Al-Fatiha. So thank you for joining us this morning. And, uh, yes, Sister Amira, your hand is raised.
Assalamualaikum, I just want to ask you, um, how do we go back and do a replay on this program? It was so beautiful when it was again.
On, on, uh, this program or Imam Rashad's program?
Uh, Imam Rashad's program.
I'll put that in the chat as well, if you can access the chat, okay? So I'll put that in the chat in a moment. So at this time, you're welcome, alhamdulillah. We're going to turn it over to Imam Kareem Hamid. And I'm thankful that you are here. Speaking of being thankful, I'm thankful that you are here and willing to do the reading. I think the reading is much better in your voice than mine. So I'm really glad to, uh, being able to just, you know, step up and just do this. So thank you so much, alhamdulillah.
Alhamdulillah, praise be to Almighty God. And, uh, and I also am grateful that you are, uh, are hosting this segment. Of AM three sixty and sharing with us Imam Mikail Sahir and now Imam Abdul Rahman. Praise be to Allah. Uh, Imam Mikail was sharing with us the commentary on the selected verses of the Holy Quran. Uh, documented from the teaching of Imam Wadid Sudeen Muhammad, Rahimul A'laa Lehi. It is contained in this, this volume here. And I shall share, Insha'Allah, where Imam Mikail Sahir, uh, where he left off at. And we look forward to his presence next Sunday, I mean, pardon me, next Saturday, Insha'Allah. Uh, I shall begin where I believe he ended at. And, uh, the subject matter that the Imam is speaking of from the Quran is, is Khalifa, Khalifa. And I shall begin on page sixty-six. And, uh, the heading is Khalifa property is female and, and male. Khalifa property is female and male. Imam Muhammad states, "How do I know that? When we go to make pilgrimage, the woman does not wait for the man to lead her in prayer. And she does not look, look to see if she is behind a man when she prays. She doesn't have to stand behind the man. The women can stand where they want, in whatever space, in whatever space they find, just like the man. The woman is equal with men during the Hajj, during the Hajj ritual. They are equal to us, especially at the Kaaba site. I'm saying this to, again, get support for my position that the Khalifa property is female. that the Khalifa property is female and male. It is our common excellence. We are oriented toward it. And God says, "We all should be oriented towards that wherever we are scattered." Now, do not think that God means just physically scattered. He means that if other interests take us away from our unity, the interest that can bring us back to the unity, he wants is that interest. The interest of the common excellence of all people. The Imam gives some Quranic references here. It says in the Quran, Surah 2, Ayat 30. He's quoting, "I am going to make a Khalifa in the earth." Then in the Quran, the chapter 27, Ayat 62, "Made you mankind, inheritors Khalifas." Then from the 43rd Surah and the 38th Ayat, "Command order by mutual consultation." I want to make a brief comment here. When, you know, what has happened in the thinking of human beings is that when we hear the word man, our mind immediately goes to the feminine, the feminine aspect. When we say, well, yes, he's a man. Or, what are the men going to do? Well, in the actual true connotation of man is that man is not just masculine. Man represents the whole of humanity. That's why we use the terminology mankind, a type of creation that is human called mankind. So we want to make that correction in our language, inshallah, as time will allow, that man does not just mean the masculine species. Man means the whole of human existence, praise be to Allah, okay? I shall move forward. Imam states here, "Man in the role and authority or power that God planned for him or intended for him is depicted or pictured." Given in the concept of Khalifa. God says in the Quran that he made not one, but many made us, whether we qualify for it or not, Khalifas. The plural is used, Khalifa. Not just one Khalifa, many. There was nobody called Khalifa in the time of the Prophet. After him, the believers got together and they decided to do a psychological thing. They said, "Look, a big officer, we have lost him. Therefore, our ruler has to be dead, or the people will not pay attention to him. We need a big officer that will at least be so magnified in the eyes of the people that they will give him respect, because the Prophet was magnified so much in our eyes. Just a preacher or Imam or leader that won't do it. He has to have a bigger title." So they went and did a little study and research, and they came up with a justification for calling their leader the Khalifa. The next subject, Khalifa, a title for all of us collectively. But believe me, the only Khalifa we have had is Muhammad the Prophet. Peace be upon him, prayers and the peace be upon him. After the passing of Muhammad the Prophet, prayers and the peace be upon him, Khalifas, rulers, were betrayed and assassinated, one behind the other. Their life was not long with the people, except for one. And really, he wasn't very long. That is a sign to me, is a sign that we should study the office of Khalifa. Don't you know Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, prayers and the peace be upon him? If he has seen any single one of his companions reminding him or bringing to his mind the idea that this person is in his behavior or in his ability Khalifa, don't you know he would have called them Khalifa Umar, Khalifa Abu Bakr, et cetera? He never called any of them Khalifa. Why? Because Khalifa is not to be worn by any single person. Khalifa is a title for all of us collectively. Khalifa is a title that belongs to all of us. And if you get a person who qualified to lead us in that role, to be that kind of person, we should never call that person himself singularly by himself Khalifa unless we are doing it as I'm doing it now. We're saying that God created all of us to be Khalifa. And here is a person here who indicates to us in his person that he has grown into the dimensions of Khalifa. He has the qualities, the dimensions of Khalifa. He has measured up to the dimension of Khalifa. But to then make that a title? No, because when you make it a title, it is just like calling your leader the king or the prince or the high priest. It's the same as doing that. You're going to separate him from the people. So he is the Khalifa. So we worship him. Next subject matter. Amir is our leader, not Khalifa, Amir. It was a mistake that they called their rulers the Khalifa. They should have continued to call their rulers Amir, because that is a title that we have justification for from the Quran and the life of Prophet Muhammad, prayers and peace be upon him. Where is the justification from the Quran? God says to us, quote, "An order by what has been revealed," end of quote, "command, order, Amir." God says to us, "Order upon the principle of Shura, mutual consultation, meeting of the minds, the mutual meeting of the best minds, discussing the matter and coming up for the consensus, a judgment they all support." That is what God said, that's what God says we should do. And the Prophet says, "No matter how small the task is, if it involves more than one person, choose you an Amir." Next reading from the Quran?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I kind of brought this up last week too. I'm seeing in the reading how Khalifa and Shura are tied together, are bound together so well that it's very important because Allah has given Khalifa. All of us are Khalifa, and all of us have this responsibility. All of us have this responsibility and to carry out the responsibility. Carrying out the responsibility is a process of Shura, to carry out the responsibilities of the collective, whether that's a family or a team, whatever the responsibility is that Allah has blessed us all to be Khalifa or made us all Khalifa. And the process of interaction between us is Shura. And it's just so woven together here in the book. The Shura is continually talked about as a principle of mutual consultation, the meeting of the minds. And when the minds meet, the unity is strengthened, you know? Is what I'm getting from that.
Yes, ma'am, alhamdulillah.
Alhamdulillah. And the one other thing, I have a question here. When it's, you mentioned inheritors, the Khalifa is the inheritor. Would that be the inheritor of the guidance?
Pardon me?
Would that mean the inheritance of the guidance?
Of the guidance?
The guidance.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm quite sure. The guidance is to be shared, and it's passed on generation to generation.
Alhamdulillah.
Valuable inheritance that we pass on to those coming behind us, yes, ma'am.
Alhamdulillah.
Praise to Allah. So Khalifa is not just male, it is, really, it is an intellect. It is an intellect. Allah was creating an intellect. And the intellect, he names it as Khalifa, Khalifa. So all of us possess the property of intellect and Khalifa. And we should respect the intellect of everyone. That's where mutual consultation is so valuable to us that we can talk with other intellects on any subject matter and reach a point of decision and agreement, praise be to Allah. Alhamdulillah. Matter of fact, a mutual consultation. It is prohibited for someone to come and sit in Shura. And when asked to give their opinion, they decline. That is not the proper way to conduct Shura. You should share what Allah has blessed you with in your thinking on any matter. So praise be to Allah, okay? I'm going to move forward. Sharing with you, yes. Yes, Amir is our leader, not Khalifa, Amir. Next. Yes, "Will you make one who will make blood cheap?" That's the question Allah poses to us in the Quran in the second Surah and the 30th Ayat, a verse. "Will you make one who will make blood cheap?" Imam Muhammad states, "He gave us something of his spirit, and he said, quote, 'Get down from here into the earth.'" He formed the man from the earth. And the Quran says, quote, "And he brought them out of the earth, and to the earth they must return," end of quote. Again, it says, quote, "Your creation is like a plant," meaning that you start from nothing but a germ or a seed. A seed in the earth germinates and unfolds into a symmetry. That is what God is telling us. He created us like a plant. So we were with God in his will, and God saw us. And God showed us through the angels. The angels did not see Adam until God showed Adam through the angels. They did not say, quote, "God, who is that up there? Who is that up here with us?" Next subject matter. The first spirit is from the earth. Imam Muhammad states, "We had no form to be seen by us, nor the angels, until we were formed in the earth." What was the base or the foundation for our coming into being? Earth, material matter. Well, where did we get our first spirit? The human spirit from the earth. That is why the angels were afraid. Is this thing going to come up out of materialism, they said? God, that materialism, yeah. They said, "God, that materialism stuff is going to cause blood, say, trouble." God said, quote, "Wait until I breathe into him of my spirit," end of quote. So now, what is the conclusion of the discussion that I just made? The conclusion is, do not underestimate our material basis. There is no life without a material basis. You may think you do not have a material basis. But if you ever wake up with your senses, something is going to tell you, "Get down from here." The reading from the second Surah of the Quran, Ayat 30.
I have another connection here, but can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, it's a little faint, just slightly faint, but I can hear you.
Okay, I put my headphones on, I don't know if I still can, but we're talking about the inheritance, the guidance is the inheritance, okay? And you said the Khalifa is intellect. Well, the intellect, the intellect and the guidance from generation to generation is a legacy for those that come after them. So the intellect and all that the parents have learned also is a legacy to the children. And I'm making this connection because when we look at us as African-Americans, there seems to be an interruption, you know? And with families being broken up and things like that, there's a disconnect. And the guidance that the parents receive and the intellect, the intellectual gains that parents receive being passed down to the children, you know? In one song, I would always hear, "You gotta be strong." It said, "Read the books your fathers read." Well, if the fathers didn't pass down certain knowledge or the parents did pass down knowledge and information to the children, there's a disconnect, and they've been denied somewhat an inheritance, you know? And even in our understanding of having faith in Allah, you know, during slavery, strong faith principles passed down to the next generation. Strong worship, strong faith is part of the inheritance. You know, what are we passing down? What connections are we making in the guidance and the intellectual properties that are being passed down? Those are rights of the next generation. So I'll stop there, you know? And Brother Michael has his hand raised.
Yes, okay, Brother Michael Hamid?
Assalamualaikum.
Praise to Allah.
My phone is still giving it, well, okay. I thought there was an echo, I had a problem the other day with that. Okay, I agree with the analysis Sister Manera is sharing with us. And my concern is that there's so much that we have to do. And there's so many influences to distract us that we have to keep reminding ourselves that we have to deal with first things first. The first thing has to be the first thing. The critical issues that keep us from seeing the legacy, the critical issues that keep us from passing on to our children, that they have an assignment from God. First of all, you know, the Creator says that there is a purpose. The truth of the matter is that God gives us a purpose, and that is to serve His will in place. And that is to serve his will and plan for humanity and for the world. That we, that sustains us. And that our children need to know. And in my opinion, you know, we should tell them, you know, whether you're in the Masjid or the Islamic Center or not. You know, you have an assignment from God and you have a legacy. So, you know, and we're told, we're told that spiritual maturity doesn't come until forty. So if they're, they're young, you know, we, we still need to maintain connection with them, consultation with them. Understand what they're listening to, what their problems are, what, what's, what their challenges are. And in spite of the, the, the distance, how they can make a contribution to the legacy. What do you see? You know, how would you deal with this? You know, we can come up with, we can come up with, with, uh, questions, you know, seeking answers, seeking their sensitivities. Because they still, you know, whether it's a conscious, look, last night, I think someone said, you know, that we are all servants of Allah. And I, I thought about it, I say, yeah, but conscious or unconscious? Are we aware that we are servants or are we unaware, you know, and that, that's the case. Many in the world making problems for the world, they're still servants of God. They can't get away from it. They can't be anything else but servants of God. The Satan, Satan, the, the Satan, the Satan pattern of, of ego and being unempathetic and being troublemaker shedding blood. That, that entity is still serving the plan by being in opposition to what Almighty God intends. Whether they like it or not, they can't get away from it. Because Almighty God has intended that what he has created out of nothing is going to go in the direction that he intends. Now, oftentimes, we don't see the fact that we have a limited free will. That that free will is the problem and the answer. The answer is the use of the free will according to God consciously. And, and the problem is not using it in that manner. And I'll stop there.
All right, thank you, Mike, praise be to Allah, Alhamdulillah. Okay, Sister Amira Shahid, please unmute your mic, I look forward to hearing from you.
To get this, uh, clarification, uh, distinctions on, uh, connection, disconnections on the different categories, i.e., uh, mutual consultation, the meaning of Khalifa, meaning of Amir. And, uh, uh, distinction on our intellect. But I want to say to Brother Michael, uh, when you talk about the consciousness, you're gonna get different results. If you, if you're working from your God consciousness and obedience to Allah, you're gonna get the best results. If we looking at Satan and his, uh, what he implements, you're not gonna get the best results. So you gotta look at, you know, I mean, Ma'am Muhammad says, all things is logical conclusion. That's what we gotta look at when we using our free will, you know, to do certain things. What, what's the, what's the conclusion gonna be? And we looking for, we always gonna be looking for the best conclusion. And I'll stop there.
Alhamdulillah, thank you, my sister. Oh, there's another hand that is raised, Alhamdulillah, Khalida Ashbar. The CEO of American Most of Three Sixty, please unmute yourself, I look forward to hearing from you.
Alhamdulillah, Assalamualaikum, Imam Karim Hamid, our dedicated station manager and much more. I appreciate you as well. I, um, was reading early this morning, uh, uh, Ayat in the Quran on Korah. I believe it was Surah. I wrote it down, but this is, this discussion made me, reminded me of it, because I'm writing things, so when I'm doing presentations, I can reflect on them. Without having to look them up. But Korah was one of Moses's people. And Quran says that, let me give you the Ayat. I think it's twenty eight seventy seven, twenty eight seventy seven, Korah. And the English translation spells it as K O R A H. But he was one of Moses, he was with the people of Moses, and he was very intelligent. But he, he, he didn't think highly of the people and he was very arrogant. And so he, um, you know, didn't talk to them nice. He, he exhibited behavior of arrogance and he, although he was very intelligent, he owned the knowledge as if it came from himself. And not from Allah, is what the Quran explained. And, um, people who didn't have knowledge of Islam, Islam or the book as it says, they admired him. They were looking at his worldly gains, his house, his prowess. And, um, like just a day before, a group of people were just admiring him, oh, I wish I had what Korah has. But the people who had knowledge, they, they were saying, no, you know, his disposition is arrogant. He, 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 he doesn't help people. What he's doing, um, is, is not feesabita law, is, is, is for his own benefit and gain. And they determined that based off of his disposition and the way he treated the people around him. I mean, nobody's perfect. I mean, he, you know, he may have ups and downs, but he was consistently arrogant and just disregard for the people that he was supposed to be serving. So one day Allah, um, they said, the next day, Allah destroyed him and his home, it went underground. And those same people um, that were being warned by the people of knowledge, they say, no, we don't want to be like Korah. You know, he's arrogant and Allah does not love arrogance. They witnessed the, the whole ground swallow him up and then his home, and then they said, whoo. We thank Allah that we, we were not like Korah. But I don't know if you, you recall that story of Korah, K O R A in the Quran, but it's very, it's a good reminder for anybody who is blessed. Allah said he gave him blessings where his very keys were weighed down. Um, you know, big men, strong men. And so he took it to his, um, from his heart into his mind and said, oh, I'm blessed because I'm smart. But Allah humbled him and destroyed him because Allah does not like that.
What, what, can you give us that, that verse that's in the Surah that you're talking from?
Yes, I think it's twenty eight seventy seven.
Twenty eight seventy seven.
This is, uh, in time this with the, the Abatiha. You know, and, uh, us recite the Abatiha daily in our five prayers. Uh, Allah is, is so merciful that we have these opportunities all throughout the day. And, and in our forward prayers, in our sober prayers, uh, and in the prayers we make at night to ask Allah to guide us on the straight path. To keep away from those ways of shaytan, the arrogance. The, uh, the, 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 the false worship of our own intellect. You know, and, and staying away from our own impulses. You know, we're seeking Allah's guidance all throughout the day, so it's just truly a mercy when we make all these connections and tie it together. Uh, helps continue to guide us and keep us on the straight path and keep us being influenced by these, uh, advances of shaytan. So I'll stop there.
Salamualaikum, uh, Imam and believers. Yes, that, uh, that, that, uh, those verses are tied in with that, with the verse the Imam pointed out to us, twenty eight seventy seven, seek with all your means to he after, but do not neglect your share in the material world. And, uh, do good as Allah has been good to you and seek not corruption in the land. But there's a series of, that's twenty eight seventy seven, there's a series of verses about Korah. Uh, his wealth and et cetera, et cetera. I think we've discussed that before in that regards, uh, but yes, that's, that's a series of verses right in that around that twenty eight seventy seven. One reminder, reminder, and prior to that and after that. Yes, thank you. Alhamdulillah, praise be to Allah. Yes, sir. In, in the Asura Kaaf that we recite every Juma. There's an Ayat, Ayats referring to one that had a lot of of, uh, of crops and had sons. And he elated in that and he demeaned a person that didn't have such a large plot of land, nor many sons. He became very arrogant, arrogant. Uh, anything that we possess is a, a gift from Allah. You know, this knowledge that we have. And the man warned us. He said, do not begin to worship the knowledge. Do not worship the knowledge. So when you don't worship it, then you freely give it. You freely give it because it is not your possession. It is not your possession. It was something that was given to you and you pass it on to other people. So praise be to Allah. Okay, we have the hand raised.
Yes, Michael Hamid, Michael Hamid.
I know you can't wait.
Yeah, this is very stimulating, a language environment. And it, it, you know, it, the, the unique way that Almighty God, Allah gives us guidance. And he gives us narratives, picture language, so that we can see the principles. The, that, that elevate our thinking. And by elevating our thinking, it, it, it makes us, it gives us the utility to, to be better instruments of Almighty God, Allah's will and plan. And so our assignment, and look, the dignity that we're given, you know, the, the assignment is not, all right, Brother Michael, this is what you have to do. No, I, I find it in terms of my sensitivities, my disposition, my experiences, the educational background, my, my curiosities even, you know, in, in terms of how life, uh, operates and, uh,
Can you wrap it up, Mike, please?
And also, and also, and also what and also what I'm moved by. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, praise be to Allah. Okay, I want to recognize the hand of, uh, Martha Nilo Abdullah.
Alaykum Wa Sallam, uh, and, and thankfully, everyone, God's peace be upon you. In, in our, and thank you, Khalida, for that verse too, uh, twenty eight seventy seven. I, I want to point out because this is a teaching class. And I was hesitant, I'm going, should I, do I need to bring this out now? But the, just paying attention to the lettering of the, the the inference to that kind of person, uh, has this relationship, if you think of it as Qara. Qara, which, you know, it, it's the Kaaf. Uh, and, and I'm, I'm referencing the K versus the Q. The Q carries a, 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 a spiritual sense of, of a, a, a particular understanding with the Alef there, internalizing it. And the Ra, Wow Nun. So I put those letters out there so that we can, when we are pronouncing it, uh, it's Arun. Arun. Because perhaps there is a, a, a one referencing Korah. And so Alhamdulillah, I'll stop right there, I don't want to get too much into it, but just pointing that out.
Thank you. You know, we have a little time left. I, I want to give as much of the commentary of Imam Wazid Muhammad. His commentary on selected verses. So if we would kind of keep our commentary short and direct and to the point. No, 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 I'm, 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 I'm speaking to myself also. So we want to share the commentary of Imam Wazid Muhammad from out of the commentary on selected verses of the Quran. So praise be to Allah, I see Sister Khalida's, Khalida's hand is still raised, Assalamualaikum, Sister Khalida.
Oh, no, thank you, I'm gonna lower it, Alhamdulillah, thank you.
Okay, I, I, I should return back to sharing the commentary of Imam Wazid Muhammad in relationship with the Quran. May Almighty God forgive his sins and grant him the home in the paradise. The next subject matter that Imam approaches is, uh, yes. Make Khalifa ruler. From the Surah, second Surah through this Ayat. God was saying, he is creating the human intellect. Not a black man, not a white man, not necessarily a man. But the human intellect could be man or a woman. He is creating the human intellect. God was saying, he is going to create the human intellect. Khalifa comes from a word or has its root meaning, going back to the origin. And Kibla means the same thing. Turning towards that, that was first, that, that belongs that, pardon me, that, that begins everything, Khalifa. Another reference from the Quran, the second Surah, the thirtieth Ayat to the thirty fourth Ayat or verse. Make ruler tell them their names. Make ruler tell them their names. The subject matter addressed here, every person is a scientist. Every person is a scientist. When the brain, Imam Muhammad states, when the brain turns on, when intellectual curiosity starts to fill the head, the mind, that is when we have production in the world. We call this scientific thinking. We need inventors and scientific thinkers. You most certainly do. And they have us thinking that the scientists are really a breed all to themselves. Foreigners, alienated creatures, when all of us have been created to be scientists. When God said he created Adam, he is saying he created the scientist. He created the first scientist. Oh, where did you get that from? The angels were thinking the man that God was making was going to be a problem for God's system of creation. Saying, quote, God, will you create other than something that will cause bloodshed and confusion? God said to them, I know what you know not. Meaning, I am creating an intellect that will be freed. Next subject matter. Adam is the father of man and student of the sciences. Adam is the father of man and student of the sciences. Actually, the first man represents that in all people, in terms of what the intellect can do. The first man represents the establishment of the human being as an intellect. The proof of that is in the Bible. God created Adam. Adam began to produce sons. And his sons became the industrial leaders for the generations to follow. They produced ironworks and everything. They even produced music and instruments to, and instruments to play the music. This is the Bible, Genesis. So if the Bible tells us in Genesis, that all of the sciences came from Adam, his generation produces all the sciences. He is the father of not only mankind. Adam, according to the Genesis, is the father of industry and the sciences. Read it for yourself, you curious ones. The sleepers, if you stay with me, you're going to wake up soon. There is the heart, then the intellect, then production. And a productive world. African Americans have been cut off from the situation needed for man's intellect. African Americans have been cut off from the situation needed for man's intellect to be productive. How was that? How has that been done? We came out of slavery where we were denied the freedom to engage the material world with our hands, feet, our eyes and minds. We know there are a few exceptions. Some Africans were not slaves over here, we are told. But there were a few fortunate ones. But the situation that they were in limited them too. We were limited by plantation slavery, the majority of us. Out of that physical bond, slavery, we were free to do what? To go on our own. Where was there to go? Long ago, they stopped speaking African language or dialects. They did not know any language but the language of the master. And none of us were, were educated. We had no prior knowledge from our fathers or forefathers. So we only went on what they gave us. Let me state this, uh, someone mentioned that the, I think it was Sister uh, Munira said that there was a breach in the inheritance. There was a breach in the inheritance. I'm referring to inheriting the, the, the Quran and inheriting the Islamic faith. It is passed down from generations. But due to the structure of slavery and their intent was to separate, to separate those that they had captured, to separate them from their, the inheritance that they could get from their parents. So they separated the parents from the child. They took the child unto themselves. And eventually the parents died, but they died with the inheritance within them. They were unable, in some cases, to pass on their past life to the offspring. So what I'm saying now is that we know that there were slaves that did identify with Islam and did some wonderful work. But as a whole people, as a whole people, Allah is reconnecting the whole people back to their inheritance. And we are the fruit of that. We are the product of Allah making the connection with the inheritance that was rightfully our own. Praise be to Allah. I hope that we appreciate it and be grateful. All praises due to Allah for making the connection us back with our inheritance. Praise be to Allah. This is a great day. Okay? Uh, yes. I'm going to, okay, we got ten minutes left. I'm going to share with you your words says. Okay, God, the, the Imam is sharing a quote from the Bible. It, it is Genesis two, verse seven. God breathed into his nostrils the breath of life. Another quote from the Quran, the Second Surah, Al-Baqarah, the verse thirty. I am making a Khalifa in the earth. Now, the Im- Imam states further, however, at one time, there was only God's creation. Everywhere you look, God's creation. Even the house you lived in was a very simple house in the beginning. Tree leaves, straw, mud. Yes, it was a very simple start, very simple beginning. But now you live within man's mind. That is what you live in. You live within man's creations. You live within man's mind all around you. So really, if man doesn't help you to be aware of God and what God wants for you in your life, you won't get it. Because the whole environment is showing you nothing but man. Referring to the Quran, the Second Surah, thirtieth Ayat, Khalifa, vice adjourned. Next subject, you cannot live outside of community. Imam Muhammad states, when you read about God saying to the angels in Quran, Most High and glorified is he, I'm about to put a vice adjourned in the earth. I'm about to put a Khalifa in the earth. That is the beginning of the life of the brain and its role in making history and establishing the order of mankind that God wants. That is what it is all about. Al-Islam is all about establishing the human soul and the human mind, human life in community. You cannot live outside of community. You cannot live outside of the issues for community. You cannot live outside the problems for community life. You cannot live outside of the direction for man in community life. From the Quran, Second Surah, thirtieth Ayat or verse, I will make in the earth a Khalifa. In Bukhari, the collection of Bukhari, two eighteen, it is stated, everyone is a ruler. Imam Muhammad states, how big can the human being become? You cannot become a god. God made us human and not god. You cannot become an angel. We are human, not angels. God said to the angels, according to our holy book, surely I am making in the earth a Khalifa. Now, we can translate it in different ways. A trustee, a ruler, one who has been given the responsibility of rule, to fix the rule, to fix the order, to fix the authority. But as a trustee, not as the authority itself, but as a trustee formed by God to keep the trust. Thinkers, scholars make a mistake and identify individual persons as Khalifa. Imam Muhammad states further. We know that in the history of Al-Islam, we have Khalifas coming after the passing away on this earth of Muhammad the Prophet. The prayers and the peace be upon him. The prophet, who was the messenger of God. The first successor after him that the Muslim community looked to as their leader was called Khalifa. That come, the Khalifa Abu Bakr. The four great Khalifs were Abu Bakr, Umar, Uthman and Ali. They were the four great rulers after Muhammad, prayers and the peace be upon him, after Muhammad the Prophet. As a person who studied very seriously what developed after the leadership of our prophet, I believe that it wasn't necessarily those individuals that made the mistake. I think that thinkers, scholars made a mistake and identified individual persons as Khalifa. Next subject matter.
We have four minutes left in the show and um, you know, we can, we can stop there and if to wrap it up, uh, I know you were reading, but any, any thoughts you have on what uh was read? During these last four minutes or anyone have any commentary on what we went over this morning, Mashallah?
There is an example in the Quran concerning the prophet Luhma. Luhman asked his son, what will you worship after me? And his son answered, I shall worship the god that you worship. So Luhman had been successful in passing the inheritance to his son. And uh, the, the, the property for Khalifa is in every human being. When we're looking at a small baby that has just been delivered, and its content is the property of Khalifa. Allah's, when the angels ask them, what are you creating? Allah's answer was, I am creating, I, I am creating a white man. I'm creating a black man. I'm, I'm, I'm creating a man. No, man means all of humanity. I am creating a Khalifa. That was his answer. An intellect, an intellect with the power to manage the creation, to manage the creation and also to be, to take charge of the creation and manage it well for the benefit of everyone. So that is what Allah first created. They said, well, Allah created man. No. Allah created a Khalifa, an intellect first. Praise be to Allah. So I'll stop right there.
Thank you and thank you again for uh, the reading this morning. Uh, Inshallah, Imam Michael Saher will be back with us next Saturday, you know, and we appreciate uh, those who participated in our study session this morning. We're going to transition. Our next show is going to be uh, preparing to make it in the land of plenty.
With God's name, the merciful benefactor, merciful redeemer. We witness there is no deity but one. He's alone, has created the universe and all in it. And we witness that Prophet Muhammad, peace and blessings be upon the Prophet, is the final messenger, final prophet. The final prophet to humanity. So uh, welcome to everyone preparing to, to make it in the land of plenty. I'm your host, Delese Umar here. And we are, you know, I, I had a, I had a, a given thought to circling back to government. And uh, I still want to do that today, but I want to do it in a different spirit. I uh, you know, I, I was reviewing, I was reviewing the book, Obtaining the Ethical Society. And uh, what that entails in terms of uh, how, how easily the human family can become disruptive. But you know, we had, we had uh, some very tragic incidents over the past week or so. In this, in this regard, I think a young lady was stabbed on a subway. Just someone stood up behind her and just stabbed her to death on the, on the subway. I think it was a train or subway. Then we had, of course, you know, we got the ongoing tragedies. And all around the world, there's these uprisings and, you know, it reminds me of that Ayatollah says the earth will behave as though it's had revelation, like it's been, that revelation has, it's inspired it to tell its story, to tell its story. Uh, and uh, we are, we are witnessing these very uh, powerful days and powerful signs in the world, you know, uh, uh, two, a young man shot up a school in Colorado, killed two people. And I think maybe the day before the assassination of this young man, uh, Charles. Uh, cats, I can't think of his last name, but he's very, very powerful. He was a very powerful personality in terms of uh, conservative thinking. And uh, I'm not so, uh, and I would, I would almost say conservative thinking on steroids. I use some, some of Michael's language there. You know, because it wasn't just conservative thinking. I, I think conservative thinking is what I saw in Governor Cox in Utah. When he, when he came behind the Hooper Rock and the, the celebration of, of supposedly capturing the young man, which he turned himself in, his family. Had him turn himself in, he's twenty-two years old. And uh, shot the young, shot the person. But Governor Cox tried to bring back civility to the times. And I think we have to also look at these times needing the voice of, of sanity and civility, someone to speak to uh, the human conscious. I saw, I saw in his address, he was speaking to the human conscious and warning us not to uh, not to let these type of tragedies make us rejoice and get over over uh, enthusiastic that, that's one for my team as I saw some of our leaders indicating that this was a, this was a blow to their team and all the, the people on the other side. The people on the other side will uh, would be uh, uh, got Rabani calling, I guess he can't get on with you, Michael. Am I being heard? Yes.
Waiting on a call from him.
Yeah, he just called me, Michael. Uh, Michael, wait on you, call him, Rabani, did you call him?
He probably did. I, I think.
He's calling you now, Michael. I didn't know how to, I didn't know how to hook him in. I wish I could have, but I may have could have just put his speaker on, put the speaker on and got him in. But anyway, Governor Cox, he, he brought a voice of sanity. And uh, I, you know, I, I was really thinking too that, you know, to, I wanted to address government, but from, from uh, terms of ethical behavior, ethical practices. Because we are looking at, we are looking at a time, a turbulent time in the society and our hearts goes out to those who have experienced these losses, great losses. Families disrupted and, and uh, uh, just total, total distress for those with, who, whose relatives were killed and, and and perpetrator's family, the perpetrator's family is disrupted by that. And you know, all, none of us really train our children to go out and commit atrocities against the human family. And I'm using that language very, very deliberately. The human family, you know, in the Quran, it, it talks about when one life is, is lost, it's as though you've killed the whole society. When we, when we let, when we let these uh, tragic tragedies and we celebrate tragedies and we witness tragedies, the governor was such a, uh, uh, he is, I was really impressed that he would, he would talk about empathy and how empathy is is destroyed. Some of the same things we talk about on the program preparing to make it in the land of plenty have how, when you lose the sense of empathy, the being able to empathize with others, to put yourself in someone else's shoes, you know, and uh, how would you like to be shot? How would you like to, how would you, how would you like to feel if your son shot someone or or if you were the mother of the victim, et cetera, et cetera? We have to, we have to, we have to put ourselves in these different pictures when we are making a judgment on, on the situation and really feel from our, feel from our own hearts, own spirit, own souls, own souls. Uh, we talked about last week, the souls, feel from our own souls that, that reservoir of, of potential goodness that's in our own selves. How we would feel if, if we were in that position. And then we should make, we should consider how to react, how to speak. And this particular Governor Cox of Utah, I'm, I'm, I'm starting repeating that because when he was speaking, you know what I said? I said, I could vote for this man for president. Because why? He had this, he had the human character and the courage to stand up and actually take the conversation away from revenge and getting, getting even uh, uh, more violence and really is, issue a warning to the nation to be, to really let this be a, a, a path that we, that where we can make a decision to go one way or the other and make sure that we are choosing correct, uh, the correct path. And, and he, he cited some things from the young man who uh, who, who had gotten slain uh, that were very helpful in terms of shaping the thinking in a positive way. And there was so much he had did as well that was negative. And there was so much he had did as well that was negative. That could have, could have inspired someone to behave negatively towards him. But uh, I'm taking a little time here because I wanted to, uh, I wanted to cover this kind of very precise. And uh, the other, the other issue was this young man, he was twenty-two years old. And uh, who, who uh, who did allegedly shooting. And uh, you know, he had even carved things on the bullets, you know, and et cetera, et cetera. But this, but I've heard, I've heard since this incident happened that uh, the, the person I'm speaking of who was killed. He had, he was creating, he was creating divisive language. Good, a lot of good, but also a, a lot of bad. Uh, including mixing, mixing up good with bad. And uh, this young man decided he would end his life and he was successful at it. He uh, he uh, he was able to, to do it, carry it out. But this message is not gonna, gonna end. The spirit is not, is not gonna leave the earth. That we uh have this, this, this contention of good and evil. Good and evil, and, and even sometime evil. I, I was thinking, I was thinking about uh Brother Henry as I was speaking. He, he said, uh, truth, truth went swimming and uh, then uh, falsehood came and stole his clothes. And uh, and left truth, and went down the road in truth clothes. And truth was, was left naked, the naked truth was left without his clothes. So, so, so this, 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 this uh, you know, we were talking about the, the, the tricks of shaitan. How he can come at you from different angles. And uh, and he said, and he used the language, the naked truth. So, so truth went down the road naked. It was the naked truth. Yeah. So uh, but there's a, there's a, there's a conspiracy of the forces of evil. And we can use language shaitan, we can call it shaitan, we could call, we could call it human weakness. Uh, uh, human uh prejudice, human uh bigotry. All of these things, all of these things are from these, this shaitan, it's from the evil, evil in the society. And these things can uh corrupt us and uh take us away from our true human self, our true human self. So this, this particular governor, Governor Cox, did excellent, he was on C-SPAN, I saw, heard it on, I heard him addressing it on C-SPAN. But uh, it was, it was just a real pleasure to hear a civil voice other than what sometime, what we bring to the picture in the, in the society. And it was from Utah. And, and this again, just to sum it up, and then we are, we are go to our uh associates here on the program and have some comments from you, from the, from, from you on these issues. And the correct, the correct posture, obtaining the ethical society. How do we get there? How do we get from this uh terrible confused state to a, to a ethical and human state? And I'm hearing this all over, where even in the leadership, Black, uh, Black Caucus. You know, everyone is focusing on their own reality. And I know that's, I know that's a necessity. Save yourselves and your family from the fire. The Quran reminds us of these things. But we also have to understand strategic uh, language and strategic approaches to get the job done. We don't want to keep committing the same mistakes of the past. So having, having a, a real strategic way of presenting, you know, say to the believers, the Quran, say to the believers, only say those things with your best. Because Satan wished to store, to sell, discard among you. He wants, he wants you to be fighting. He wants you to be at war. He wants you, we, we heard this language in this week coming up, change this to the Department of War. You know, this, this, this aggressive language that we see taking us away from civility to more, more focus on violence and retribution and fighting. You know, and et cetera, et cetera. So uh, with that being said, I think I said a lot, I apologize for that. But uh, I wanted to really drive home this particular point, these particular points. Because we, we are, we are here to remake the world. We want to remake the world. We don't want to be living in a world of hate, bigotry, prejudice. And well, no matter which side it's coming from, whether it's from the African-American people or it's from uh the Spanish, or if it's from the Caucasian uh people, et cetera. We are one human family and we are Americans. And we have to, we have to stand on those principles. Our email picked up the American flag and warned us about these things. So uh, Professor Rabani, welcome. I hope you got connected and uh, Michael. Hamdulillah, peace and blessing to you all and to our listening audience as well. Professor, share some thoughts with us.
Assalamualaikum.
Waalaikum assalam, rabbatullahi wa barakatuh.
The God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer, witness, there's no God but one. And we witness that Muhammad the Prophet, to whom the Quran is revealed, is the uh prophet, uh, or the seal of prophets, the, the prophet that was known for his mighty foundation of character.
Yes.
You know, uh, Allah revealed the Quran that is the holy book of the Muslims. In that, in fact, it, it all, it agrees with all scriptures. Uh Torah, Injil, or the Torah, the Gospel. And uh, the overriding character of the Quran is to give man guidance to that which is right and just. And uh, it is the one, and, and Muhammad was the one that God guided as well as Jesus Christ, as well as Moses. And, and it was based upon a foundation of, of character in the human being. Is the, we call it Usua, his model, was given and uh to us as a, a model God approved for human beings. Because he said, for any who believe in God in the last days, he is the, the, the best uh model for human beings to follow. That means believing in God and believing in accountability to God. That you have to answer to God one day. And you fear God, you fear God's rejection. So that it is working in you, in your soul and in your nature. Uh, and, and is, and, and that nature is a nature that is known uh by many of the scholars, is the nature uh, of the human being and all human beings. And especially the Hanafi, that, that it's called Hanafi, is the one that his nature gives him guidance. So you know, when, when you do wrong, it, it, it rejects or causes you to be uneasy with yourself. You're not, you're not at peace. And uh, if you do right, oh, it's wonderful. You have a wonderful feeling. So until we practice uh, understanding that uh, that how we came up as a, as a community, African-American community. And uh, and we showed love to those who were uh some of the work, uh, some of the most wicked uh behaviors, wicked treatment. We never did uh cause uh, or uh, uh, cause these harms to come from the, to other people or their children. So the incident that occurred a few days ago was an incident based upon the passions that people had uh created in themselves. Wanting to be uh in charge. We talked about that last week concerning uh Mara, uh the, the, the uh concept of the souls. Uh, Amara, and, and we talked about the uh connection with the, with the self uh, self-examination. And also uh, the uh, the, the self being at peace. So seems like the uh, when people who jump to conclusions, they're always at the forefront, like you had mentioned, that uh, the, 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 the the concept of, of uh what people would normally think, oh, that we need to, we need to get whoever that did this. No, you'd be thinking, uh, you know, the, 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 like you said, the, the harm of, of this act that causes the people, the family, relatives to suffer and to, to be in a state of shock because it was a terrible, a terrible uh, uh, incident. But we are always uh told as Muslims that uh, this is in the plan of Allah, Almighty God's plan, the overall plan of God. And uh, that's why he's, you know, we don't want to uh have the situation where we're afraid that God would reject us when we are uh in our behavior, when we are doing uh our everyday, uh working our everyday lives. So that gives us guide rails to take us to where we uh, where we were designed and planned to go. But we have choice. And when we have choices, that's what happens. When you, when you are not totally engaged in, in what Almighty God, whether you're Christian or Jew or, or a Muslim, I would say, uh, uh, and a believer. And when I say believer, I'm speaking about the natural tendency in us. We call it vitra in our souls to want to do right. And we don't want Almighty God uh to be disappointed in, in, in the highest creation called human being or man to give us the benefits that he wants to give us. And I'm not saying he, I'm just using he as a, as a uh, authoritarian type of situation or pronoun. So don't get on me about pronouns.
Yeah, these pronouns.
So, so just think about the one who created the, the heavens and the earth, the sun, the moon and the stars.
Yes, sir.
And all that's within it. The uh, even from an insect, even a small uh grain of sand. It could not have been a man to have created this. And we see that science and religion has come together, the science, scientific uh proof of religion, basically. But religion came as a spiritual presentation to the human being to give him guidance. So uh, what we are seeing is a, is a, 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 an environment which is trying to get human beings out of their natural human life. And that's what we experience. We've experienced those things in our time all the way back to uh, I guess when I was just a small boy. All the way from uh, uh, Kennedy. Uh, that assassination, uh, at Magar Evers, I met Magar Evers before he was assassinated in in the sixties personally. I met personally with the Dr. King. And I know the, the, I know the, 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 the uh feeling. Uh, the feeling that happened when those two, two, and then during uh, uh John F. Kennedy's assassination, assassination. Everybody knew where they were when that happened. Because many of the people, many of the people cried. African-Americans, Caucasian Americans, Hispanic Americans, all cried. Why? Because of the way in which this man was uh, uh assassinated. And I've seen it over and over, over again. I've seen it in the streets. I've lived in, in, in the streets. So I know the feelings that happened when all of a sudden because of something that was most irrelevant, really, to the growth and development of humankind. Uh, happens. We have to be, we have to be careful in this day and time because a lot of people are being influenced by uh behavior and language, word, uh words make people.
Yeah.
And everything that will bring a message to your mind. And once that message is brought to your mind, then you might act on it. You have to weigh what comes in, you have, that's why you have two ears. One on the right and one on the left. And when you hear something, you have to weigh it. You cannot impulsively act on everything you hear. You have to step back, weigh it and see, what does God think of this? What does Almighty God think of it? Will it be, will he be uh, uh, will he be pleased? Or will he be uh, uh, what, what we say, uh disappointed in our behavior?
Yeah. Well, thank you. Uh, you know, as you were saying, that I was thinking about that, that, that history of uh violence. But Michael, go ahead and share some thoughts if you would please.
Thank you. Assalamualaikum to everyone. And uh, there's a lot to think about uh uh as, as you were putting forward. I want to get the name of the governor again.
Their last name is Cox. I'm not sure of his first name. But it was such a pleasure to hear some civility in government, right? Someone speaking to the human spirit and, and needs. Such a pleasure because we've been in a terrible, terrible atmosphere for the past few years, matter of fact. Go ahead, Michael, sorry.
Yes, the Governor Cox, I, I wanted to get his name specifically.
Yes.
So as you said, he, he projected, hi- his response was a human response, an excellent response.
And leadership, he showed leadership, you know? That, that's really what I really admired, that it was a response from a leader. Someone who's taken responsibility to warn the people of upcoming danger in the behavior and neglected behaving, neglected excellence in your behavior. Go ahead, Michael.
Yes. So it brought to mind the response that the press was expecting from a member of the uh uh, the Palestinian, Palestinian uh uh organization led, led by Anwar Sadat. No, no, not Anwar Sadat, pardon me, uh, uh, doctor, uh. I can't think of his name now, but anyway, she was a part of Palestinian group in, here in America back at nine eleven. And we've just uh we, we just, Arafat, yeah, thank you very much. Uh, Chairman Arafat, she was a Christian leader in that group. And uh, the press wanted to put her on the spot. But they asked her what she thought about the, the bombers bombing the, the Twin Towers. And her response was much like Governor Cox's response. She said, we have to look at the conditions that produces a mind that would do such an atrocity. It's not, it's not these individuals, you know, there's a tendency to, to want to look at individuals and circumstances. Uh, the higher, the higher focus is looking at what are the conditions? What are the forces? What are the ideas? What are the thoughts that produce the kind of behavior that we're seeing? Now, Almighty God, Allah, highly glorified and most high as he is in this condition, as I've said on other occasions. The Creator is, is taking humanity somewhere. He's taking the, the uh, the resources that we utilize as human beings somewhere. Can you imagine? Can you really think about a creator that would bring creation into being and just step back and just leave it alone to its own devices? I, I know I can't. And, and I've, I've got walking around sense. I'm not those, I'm not a scholar or anything like that. But with walking around sense, I understand that the Creator, Almighty God, Allah is using our limited free will. Because it's obvious that he steps in from time to time. I was thinking, and lastly, I was thinking earlier, uh. uh, a few days ago, I was listening to this report of history on Genghis Khan. And from twelve nineteen to twelve sixty, forty-one years, I think, there was a rampage of the Mongols under the Khan, the Khan family, uh, leadership. Uh, uh, mass killings, hundreds of thousands of people, particularly, uh, assaulting the, the quote unquote Muslim community, Muslim governments. And at the end of that, this Khan family became Muslim. And that, that, that's a miracle.
Yeah, it is.
The, the enemy, the enemy of Muslims become, their family becomes Muslim. Uh, so, you know, again, the Creator is in charge of these, these, uh, events. Uh, and I'm looking from Africa to, uh, the Cleveland Browns. How Almighty God is operating in the world to get our attention, to show us certain things. And the, the attainment of the, the attaining of the ethical life. Imam Muhammad lays out three, three, three principles. Dealing with integrity, integrity or wholeness. And that is spiritual integrity. The idea, the belief that the Creator is in charge. And these may be dark days, but there's better days coming. That's spiritual integrity. Many of us have lost that. We've forgotten that the Creator, regardless, regardless of how bitter our personal reality becomes, better days are ahead. The Creator is in charge. The second principle is, uh, contextual integrity. Allah has created us as human beings with various capacities and potentials. And we have to find our way. In fact, the soul requires of us finding a way to get in where we fit in to make life better. And if we reject that, there are consequences and repercussions that come into our life. There, the, the, life seems to become more bitter. Even if we have the sweetness of life, a good home, good, 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 good jobs, friendships in all walks of life, life becomes bitter where we don't get in where we fit in. And lastly, and this is a, this is a, an integral, uh, focus or perception that the world needs so badly. We need procedural integrity, integrity, according to Imam Muhammad. We're, we're not utilizing, we're not behaving, we're not, we're not using principles like, like Governor Cox to remind us of our common humanity and that insensitivity, ignorance, uh, arrogance, these, these negative ideas, uh, that the human being is capable of performing. These things are in our way. And they not only punish the individual, but they punish the, the, the group around us. So the Creator is getting our personal attention by having those that we look up to, having, uh, family members going off, gun violence, all this is to get our attention that we need to take another route. Thank you.
And you, and you know, Michael, I was, uh, I was reflecting on the, the events of how this young man's family helped him to face the consequences of his deeds. You know, and, uh, and, uh, a family friend and, and his father had him to turn himself in. Had him to turn himself in. And you know, and they, 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 and then the, the legal people who need prestige as though they are responsible, they, they were talking, bragging about how we captured this person and et cetera, et cetera. They didn't, they didn't, they weren't even allowed, the, I would say, the convenience of bragging about the powerful forces of government and how we came down on him. They, they put out his picture, they did this, they did that.
Imam Delacy?
Yes, sir.
This guy may or may not be the, the real culprit, the real.
That's what I'm saying, yes. He's allegedly the one, yes.
Let me finish. He may or may not be the one that perpetrated this, just like James Earl Jones. You know, we, you know, in fact, you know, we've become so, uh, not reactionary, uh,
James Earl Ray.
Yeah, James Earl Ray, yes. Uh-huh. Uh, thank you. The, uh, the, the climate, you know, we've become so dejected since the, these, Dr. Dr. King was killed and, and Robert Kennedy and after and so on. You know, we, 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 our bubble has been burst in terms of, uh, and we've become so cynical, that's the word I'm looking for. You know, untrusting, you know, the, these, these, uh, events affect us in our spirit and our sensitivities. And I'll, I'll stop with that.
Yeah, I want to, I want to continue where I was. Uh, he, there was, there was this boasting going on about how effective law enforcement was in, in retaining the young man that went over three hundred miles or so to the south of the state to where his home was. And, uh, then of course, the family felt that he was the one. Like you say, he may not be, we'll find out for sure what's going on. But, uh, they, they, he turned himself in basically with some people, assistance of his father and, uh, friend, family friend. So just the idea of, of, uh, wanting to be in charge and wanting to be the man or the person, et cetera, et cetera. And they were just mentioning all of these names who contributed to this thirty-three hours, he was on the run, et cetera, et cetera. You know, but, uh, we have to be aware that there are forces in this life, in this world that create the atmosphere for these things to happen. And, and by pitting one side against the other, one side against the other. And this is what the governor was, was, uh, was warning, giving us cautious about that. This, this could be a turning point for us. This, we, if we utilize this, uh, incidents and the incidents that in the recent past, had a school shooting too, another school shooting in Colorado, where a young man killed two people, wounded several others, killed himself. You know, this, these, these are some turbulent times, but we can, we can either use these things as a sign for us that change has to take place. Or we can just keep going down the rabbit hole, as they say, to, uh, uh, to, of destructive behavior and blaming, blaming, blaming everyone for our own shortcomings and disappointments, et cetera, et cetera. So Professor, share some thoughts with us.
And, and we do have a hand, we have a hand up.
Yes. Let's get our listener and, uh, observer in, then we'll go to you, Professor.
Alhamdulillah, Bilal, the poet.
Alhamdulillah, alaikum. Yeah, I was, I was, uh, praise be to Allah. Um, I'm, I'm thanking for that message that I woke up to, uh, Imam Delacy, so praise be to Allah. Just think I get some good raka, raka, raka talk. Alhamdulillah. This is a poem I had wrote and that I'd like to share. Assassination of a Republican, young politician. Period about his mission. It's actually judged by his intentions. Weak leadership and false worship. The government needs more than a face lift. A young man, Trump devoted fan. It's indeed a shame and not a political debt. Who, we know who to blame. This administration is insane, full of games. All about money, glory and fame. Corruption in the White House. Stealing from the poor, mass deportation, colonization must stop. A secularized society, a lot of fear, grief and misery. We accept our responsibility. Let's, let's continue building our community. So, so we are doing better without respect for those who wrote their letter. Allah raised us up and here we must hold his trust. The believers are humble and tough. In the hoods, the mothers are still crying, their children are dying. We are no longer the lost sound, our way of life is sound. I mean, Imam said, we can't stop now. Time and sense would be one of our best friends. Department of Justice, FBI, firing their best, political suicide, Trump lying, more people dying. The chair will give him false information. He shouldn't never be put in that position. Assalamu alaikum.
Alaikum assalam. All right. Thank you, Bilal, for that, uh. Professor, we want to circle back to you.
Uh, you know, when I, when I, when I hear these different situations that occur and, uh, of course, the first ones is, is that we hear from the news, uh, the news, um, corporations. And the news corporations then select who they want to speak on that topic. And very, very few news, uh, outlets have the religious leadership in, in, in analysis of what, what has happened and what is the solution? I just don't like to hear about, uh, you know, what, what needs, what is broken? How do we maintain and build structure in the human life? And in the, and the language that will build, uh, a strong citizenry? Because all I, all I hear is the, is the, 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 what the act was. And nobody doesn't come up with solutions. And, and that's why, that's why you're going, you, you, I'll leave you if I can't solve a problem. And, and we working on that problem and, 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 uh, it happens over and over again. What is the definition of insanity? You know? That's, so I don't want to be around that myself personally. I'm interested in the solution. And I, and, and no matter what the, what, whether you like the medicine or not, uh, this is the solution to your illness. You know? We, we adopt this by the great physician. But the, 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 uh, human being, I don't care what level you, you are on, you have to think about, is this the way the Creator who created the most excellent creature wants that creature to achieve its greatness? And he, and, and he designed the human being to be excellent and to strive for excellence. And that's how he created the whole creation. That's why when Darwin was talking about, uh, you know, the, the ape or any other, uh, uh, creature, even that creature, and we, we certainly have not seen that, uh, in, in science. All we see is the evolution to, to, to be better and to grow, and to grow in our best intellect. And that's what made the world, uh, uh, you know, like you said, Genghis Khan, Kubla Khan, all those, um, people who generated mass murder. Uh, I'm talking about, you said thousand, that, and they're, they're, there's equip, there's a, an equivalent of, of millions that were slain.
That's right.
And, and that's not, that's, that's just not the, uh, Khan. But look at, look at the ones that have hap, what happened in Central Europe. A hundred year war. A hundred year, a hundred year war. And nobody came up with a solution for that? So this is what I'm saying, that, uh, the people who should be at the foremost or the forefront of this should be people of, of, uh, religious, uh, conviction and explaining to, to the peo- people, the population, how we got in and how we get out. And what is expected of us by the one who created us? That's all, all I'm saying.
Yeah. Obtaining the ethical society. I, I can't put enough emphasis on that particular work by Imam Ronald B. Shahid, the words of Imam W. D. Muhammad. How, how ethics principle of life has to be at the forefront of these discussions. So, uh, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to acknowledge too and remind myself as well that we have a program coming on behind us at eleven. So we want to try to be as prompt in getting, uh, getting done here. And I, I would invite Sister Manira to, uh, if she can remind us of this program upcoming after our broadcast at eleven. It's a new, it's a new, I think it starts this week, if I'm not mistaken. It's a new, uh, production that will be coming online. So Michael, what?
Yes, uh, we've, 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 uh, got forty-five minutes plus to go. Well, a little less to give the, uh, the new program coming online. Yes, uh, the, the Creator, Almighty God, Allah has given us the, the charge and the ability to manage our emotions, to manage our thinking. And it can be challenging when we have an environment, a social environment that calls us away from that, you know? There's so many retarding forces in the culture, in, 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 in the cultural expression. There's so many distractions that call us away from taking time to reflect and think a little, little beyond, think beyond the surface of, of, of events, the surface of our own lives, you know, you know, uh, many, many of us, we're regulated by job, family responsibility, so on and so forth, that we don't think about the internal regulation of managing how we feel. You know, uh, I was listening to this neu- neuro, neuroscientist, uh, Andrew Huberman. And he was talking about how chemicals in the body, uh, assist us in regulation. There's oxytocin, which is, is a feel-good chemical that the body produces. It, it's, it's a bonding chemical. It, it, it bonds mama to child, mama to the new baby. It, it bonds us when we see, when we perform a good act and we see a good act being done. It, it, it's produced to, to, uh, bring us together. And then we have the, uh, the chemical, uh, cortisol, which is the fight or flight chemical. And these chemical, chemical responses, most of us don't know how we operate as a human being and how the events and certain influences in the society affect us. You know, a lot of times we think that this is our thought, but it's a thought that's projected because there are people, leaders in the society that know how to go through the, go into the back door instead of coming through the proper door of approaching your intelligence. They, they subliminally make suggestions to the back door or your subconscious. And most of us, we're not aware of these kinds of operations that are going on. The suggestions that the world is calling us to be less and less sensitive and less caring for one another. In, 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 in short, becoming less human. And I'll stop there.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Michael. Appreciate it very much. You know, and I, and I want to, I want to add to that train of thought just a little bit to that train of thinking. Because the governor also mentioned something that I thought was very interesting and things we've talked about here quite a bit. He was talking about empathy and how the human mind is not wired, as you were saying, to look at these type of tragedies happening in the world. He, and I'm using, I'm using the language of the world because it's not just a one, one incident that I'm looking at. I'm looking at the total picture of this, this, uh, this, uh, obsession with violence and destruction that is being perpetrated daily in our lives, where we have seen bodies, mingled parts of bodies torn or. Where we have seen bodies, mangled parts of bodies torn apart with bombs and et cetera, et cetera. But here was a, here was a story where, where the witnesses were talking about seeing this young man get shot. And blood shooting out of his neck like a fountain. You know, this stuff you only see on horror movies. Uh, this, this is not, this is not normal, normal things that the human spirit. And mind can absorb and especially if it's a loved one, especially if it's someone you admire and respect, et cetera, et cetera. That can, that can cause permanent damage to the, to the soul, to the, to the, the mental capacity. Of a person to witness these type of things. And for those who witnessed that in person, a lot of them gonna need psychiatric help to walk them through. That horrible experience, especially if that they were there to see someone they admired and respected, et cetera, et cetera. And see that person get shot like that. But, and this brings up another perspective for us to look at. That the human, the human being is, is very easily able to isolate. These type of circumstances to, to one individual and not really make a connection. That there are many incidents happening in the world where, and things that we should be opposing. We should be working against these things to protect the sanity of, of, of our society. We cannot allow our society to be victimized by violence, et cetera, et cetera, a violent society. And we've had this too much as African Americans in particular, going through so much trauma, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, then trying to recover from that and then having things heaped on us. More and more oppression that will prevent healthy, healthy life. So just, just the idea of, uh, of, uh, traumatic experiences and their effect on the society. And, uh, the governor pointed out that we are, and he may have even used the same word, we not wired to process these type of things. So we, we, we know, we know, we, 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 we complain a lot about the news media don't show us the real picture. But most of us can't handle the real picture.
Sister Manira has her hand up.
Yes.
Yes, Assalamualaikum, uh, morning everyone.
Wa alaikum assalam.
Uh, as you all were speaking, one thing that, uh, stuck out to me. You know, how many times in a day does a person hear hello? You hear hell, you know, right in the beginning of that word. And so that, uh, helps us realize how important the greetings that we give to each other of peace. Assalamualaikum. You know, and we're asking that Allah's peace be upon you and that we're obligated to uphold the peace. Uh, right here in this conversation and in society. So it's a constant reminder that the human being is, uh, created to. Uh, be sustained in an atmosphere of peace. That's our natural disposition. And, um, and we could stop even saying that, hello with someone. And, uh, if they don't understand, Assalamualaikum, uh, may Allah's peace be with you, may the Lord's peace be with you. May we, you know, may you have a peaceful day. Say something in terms of peace to constantly remind people that this is our natural disposition. And, uh, the other thing, I just wanted to briefly say the next show. Our, our new show that does start today, um, is entitled Why Be An Entrepreneur? And this is Imam, uh, Tariq Abdul Mukman. The Southern Convener of Imams out of Biloxi, Mississippi. And he's the founder at the Entrepreneurs and Development Institute. He'll be presenting a two-hour, uh, presentation every Saturday, eleven AM to one PM Eastern Standard Time. And so that'll be ten AM Central Time. So we look forward to this new show that starts today as well.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. So Professor, uh, please share some thoughts if you would.
Just, I was just thinking about, uh, when, when, when Brother Michael was speaking about. The trauma that, uh, we, we have experienced just growing up, uh, all of us on this, on this program. How many people we've seen just, uh, uh, be killed and, uh, uh, died, uh, uh. From all kinds of ways, I mean, in terms of, uh, shootings and stabbings and, I mean. I saw, I had just been eight, nine years old, seeing people cut up with a razor. And, uh, you know, and having, uh, um, uh, friends and relatives, uh, shot and killed, you know? So we've had, we've had our, uh, I don't know what, what the psychologists or psychiatrists would, would, would have called us. But we weathered that storm, but it only made us think. Say, is this the end of, is this the purpose of life? You know, and, uh, it led us to a rational religious life in, at Islam.
Yes.
And we say, oh, I see, that when we read a book that was revealed by God through one of God's, uh, mighty messengers and prophets. Our prophet, we see answers. We don't, we don't see what, we, of course, the Quran tells us, look at those who went before you and see what their end was. Uh, Pharaoh and, 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 uh, Haman and all of these different, uh, uh, oppressed people. But, uh, again, what about the children in, in, in Gaza? What about their, their lives, children being starved? And I'm not, uh, look, I don't want to get into no, uh, what they call just a, a contest of words. These are actual facts. And you talk about, uh, uh, empathy. Oh my goodness, what happened to the, uh, the, uh, uh, great honorable American spirit? That when people are being oppressed, that they, and they can't respond to that oppression. Uh, America, we've always looked at America as being, uh, a salvation for the, for those who are, um, not privileged to get themselves out of situations. But would carry, would, would take them in. The people I remember, the boat people Vietnam. They, they were getting away from oppression and trying to find freedom. Look at the, look at the people in, of, uh, of Poland and, and Germany. I went to, uh, I visited the, uh, the, uh, um, concentration camps of, uh, Dachbach. And, uh, Auschwitz. And I saw the situations and the, and the hideous, uh, uh, behavior of Nazi Germany. And I said, and, and I saw pictures of the, uh, and I've been into those, uh, those, uh, crematoriums. And I, I can imagine how the people felt going into an area that they first gassed you and then took the bodies and put them in a oven. And these are, these are things that, uh, it, it should touch a human being's soul to say. Uh, we can never have that as a part of our, uh, country. Or our, uh, our leadership thinking that this would ever happen. So we know that we have to confront it. We have to tell, we have to confront it. But we confront it with the, with the measures that only Almighty God can confront it with, just like Prophet Muhammad. Peace be upon him, blessings be upon him, Moses confronted it, Christ Jesus confronted it. And, and if people say they believe in, uh, in the teachings of these great mighty prophets. Then we need to act on it. When we see wrong, what do we do when we see wrong? If we can't move it with our hands, we have to speak against it. And if we speak against it, uh, we can't speak against it, then we have to hate it in our hearts. That is the way in which we, we have to affect change in society. Inside, inside to outside. And if that can't happen, outside to inside, okay? So use the solutions, all right?
Yes, obtaining the ethical society. We, we definitely want to work towards that particular idea. And, uh, in preparing to make it in the land of plenty. That's a driving force for us, how to, how to be successful in the din- dynamic. Struggle for life, for a good and productive life. How, how do we do that? And we have to have ethics principles, et cetera, before us. So Michael, any, any speakers, anyone want to speak or you want to share something with us?
And I, I do want to share, but I want to invite the audience. We have a number of people in the audience and we want to ask the audience. Because we've, we've, we've created an environment, you know, the, the, the principles that we're, we're looking at, the problems that we're looking at. What do you see as possible common sense steps that we can take? What do we need to do in your opinion? And we ask you to come into the conversation. I, I do have, I do have some ideas, you know?
Please, please, yeah.
And it's, it's, it's related to what you, what was just stated. Prophet Muhammad has given us the, 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 the behavior, the thinking for problem solving. You know, it has to be, we have to address the issue. We can't run away and, uh, uh, what did they say, like the ostriches bury your head in the sands? We can't, we can't do that, but people are doing that. People, people are, what do you call it? They're, they're dropping out, you know, they're, they're dropping out, uh, and running away from these challenges. Let, let so-and-so do it, let DeLacy do it, let Robani do it, I don't, oh man, I'm throwing up my hands. So the, we have to, we have to first understand that the Creator is in control. So the one who originated the human family will guide and is guiding the human family that asks. That asks for that help. You have not because you ask not. You don't have God's help because you're not asking Him for help. In the way that He approves of. We can't approach God and we got all kinds of slime and, and dirt on us. You know, there's a saying from Prophet Muhammad about such an individual. Everything about their life goes against God and godliness. Everything, but yet he's throwing up his hands, talking about lordy, lordy, help me, help me, help me, Lord. But un, unworthy of the help. You can't get, we have in Al Islam and it, it's a ritual, but it's a design, it's designed to bring to our mind. You can't approach God any kind of way. You smoking a blunt on your knees praying to God. Come on now. Come on, you, so the Muslim has to wash up. We have to make ablution, what's called ablution. We put water on our hands, uh, head, feet. You know, to the end of the process. But the process is, is telling us, the wisdom in the process is you can't come to God any kind of way. And the five, and the five daily prayers are designed to say, you can't just, you can't just do this on Friday afternoon. On, on Saturdays for the Jews or Sundays for the Christians. You can't just do this one day a week. And then bring other, other, uh, give your attention and time to other things which amount to worshiping other gods. Where you giving your time, who you, who and what you're giving your time to tells you where your treasures are. Where, where your devotional attention is. So it, it, it's not rocket science. God makes it very clear to us how we're to operate. And to show that it's a ritual, we're told that if you can't find water that doesn't have a smell to it. You can't find water, uh, that, that it is, that is suitable. Use something from the earth, use, use clean, clean dirt, clean sand. You know, uh, put your hands in it. Dust it, dust it off, put it to your face with the intentions of purifying yourself to, to communicate with God. That, 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 these things are practical. These things are thought provoking and there's answers, there's solutions to how we address problems. Within ourselves as well as outside of ourselves. These things, these things, look, President Trump is here for a reason, to get our attention. Look, we're about to lose this, this, uh, this republic that we say we love so much. We're about to lose America, whether you know it or not. We, 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 we watching video games and movies and so on and so forth, uh, to, to distract ourselves. And there are people who are with purpose about to take this country over. End all elections, trigger, 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 uh, mass confusion. In order to, uh, do away with the constitutional construct of government. Perhaps even have a race, race, uh, race, uh, uh, I'll say it, I'll say it because it's, we need, race wars. Look, in nineteen seventy-five Imam Muhammad told us, so this, this, the possibilities. And we've had police actions and so forth to try to trigger us to get off, get off into some type of violent reaction. You know, since, since the seventies. And the people who are most obligated to the American way of life, they're taking all their goods. They're taking all of their resources outside of the country. They're taking their knowledge capital and not helping us solve problems. These people are corporate leaders, corporate giants. They know how to solve problems. They have research and development, uh, programs. But are they helping make America better? Hell no. It's all about the dollar and I'll stop with that.
Assalamualaikum.
Wa alaikum assalam, welcome.
Yes.
Thank you. Martha Nilo, aptila here from St. Petersburg, Florida. And, and to your question, uh, I keep going back to identifying, informing and investigating what each one of us. Have a particular, uh, I won't say angle, but a particular interest. And whatever that interest is, and when you were explaining about the, the ablution, I was thinking, be you lightly or heavily equipped. So as not to think that the contribution can't come forward. And with Rabani, uh, you know, mentioning about the, the heart. The heart having a desire to even make a difference or just come forward with whatever thoughts are on our mind. And as we are doing so right now, uh, and have been doing. And thankfully, there are areas in relation to the strength of what we have. So if, if all I can do, if I can't stand up in prayer, I'm in, in a wheelchair or what have you. I can at least, my, what is really standing up is my faith, my belief in what I'm doing and contributing. So just speaking to the heart of those who may be thinking that there's nothing that they can do. But collectively seek out someone in a conversation and then connect to those avenues and communities. That are really centered on, as we say, the faith communities, but truly centered on making a difference for the better. I'll stop right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bilal has his hand up.
Yeah, every little bit helps.
I mean.
Wa alaikum.
No, you know?
Wa alaikum. Wa alaikum. No, we, we have, uh, we have a great app, we have a great communication. That's available to us at AM three sixty and, and, uh, CWSC, many of our, the, uh. Programs that we got throughout, uh, America. And let's put out the support, financial support. Our listening support, our responding support to what we have. Take it seriously and respect what we have. So Allah that be grateful for what He have given us. There's nothing like that we have that we all right now to strive for. And remember, social media is controlled by the corrupt people, the rich people. And they playing games with our children's mind and they manipulating society. And they're playing games with our children's mind, and they're manipulating society. And last, they, they destroying the soul and the essence and intellect of our young people. So let's, uh, focus in on that, get that message and get them with us, you know, more. And so we can help guide them towards a better listening. Uh, scenario for them to, to be about and, and come a part of. We want them on, we want them more on our, you know, on this agenda that we have right now. They, they coming, cuz they, they be having their, 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 their voice on, on the MP sixty in a minute, so pray it be sound loud. Let's, uh, let's, you know, let's stay focused on what we have, and continue to put out, put all we got into what we have. That's why we show Allah that be grateful.
Wonderful, wonderful. So Professor, we're gonna circle back to you, I, uh, I'm hearing so many good things, and you mentioned. You mentioned strategies, and, uh, that's what we need, and, and certainly respect for this platform. Is a great strategy to share with your friends and neighbors, et cetera. That we have these pro, this, these programs and programming coming to the public. Or they're, they're being uploaded to YouTube, they can be found on YouTube. So we should, we should be highlighting these presentations that we're giving, Professor, share some thoughts.
Yeah, we had, uh, mentioned ethics. And, um, actually, and morals also. In order to develop that ethical society that is, uh, uh, based on. Uh, the tenets of, uh, revelation. Now, one of the things about believing or having a belief is that you have to have courage. One of the things that's missing in leadership is the ability to maintain and to exert that courage. That moral courage, when you, like I said before. And, and that, uh, we have been taught as Muslims to take, take, uh, to, uh. Change, to make a, a change that's bad. We have to, uh, use, uh, 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 the good sense that we were given. To develop a rational so- solution. That uses its basis, the, uh, moral base that Almighty God established, established through, uh, the Quran, the. Baswa and the Torah. These are the tools that we use to, uh, affect, um. Lasting change, and you have to, and the human being has to be at the foundation of that. Now, when you take on the responsibility to be a judge. Or, uh, a legislator, you're taking on a responsibility of help, helping the, to govern. Uh, human beings, and you're gonna be judged on what you say and do in that position. I think one of the hattis was, the first people who are going to be judged, uh, will be those who are put in positions of leadership. On the day of judgment. And, 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 and the way, and, and if you have not judged properly. Then you are going to be, uh, punished more so than the, the people that followed you. So here you have a situation, in fact, Allah said, I doubled the, uh, doubled the portion of punishment. But you don't believe in punishment, you don't believe in the last thing, you don't believe that, uh, you have to face your Lord. The moment you, uh, your soul is taken from your physical body. Or your social body, and the spiritual body is now, uh, has nothing to say because you had the opportunity. To, uh, establish yourself and, uh, uh, and, and, and dominate, not through. Uh, uh, a kind of, uh, uh, spiritual, we talking about spiritual, we're not talking about. Uh, uh, church spiritual, we're talking about a spirit of, um, making, uh, your life. Uh, and moving towards something that is, uh, uh, first of all, the whole, the, the people are not going to be. Um, congratulating you when you take a moral stand. Sometimes you have to go against your whole family, to take a moral stand. But nevertheless, Almighty God is with you. And the more that they try to dissuade you from the, uh, doing right and righteousness. And promoting it in society, the stronger you become, and, uh, Almighty God is supporting you through. Uh, all that you need in order to establish, uh, a righteous environment. So you start with self, your family. You might not, you might not influence all of your family. Or you, 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 you might not influence, uh, any in the family. And then your neighborhood, you might not, you might just influence one neighbor down the block. One person in that house. Yesterday, we came out of the masjid from Juma, from Juma prayer. I went out, I came out, I'm in Chester, Pennsylvania, I went to the masjid here, and I came out with the ema. And as we went out, as we came out, there were three young, young boys coming back from school. And, uh, as we, I, I opened the door, they were there right in front, and I said, assalamualaikum. Allahu Akbar, and, uh, oh, it was, uh, uh, hamdulillah, and they said, they said, what, what? I said, hamdulillah, oh, what does that mean, hamdulillah? And then they start repeating that, young boys in the, just coming from school, they said, and, and smiling, cuz they repeated it. It's, oh, this is different, this is new, in their minds, but they'll never forget it. And that's what we have, we have to be concerned and have some, uh, what we call. Uh, sensitivities to the youth. And one last thing, if you wanna, you wanna stop gun violence, then stop putting it, uh, repeatedly on. The TV and on these, uh, on, on the computers. And all your shows is showing someone being shot and killed. So you should, you become insensitive to the real thing because, uh, of, uh, the conditioning that is occurring. All of your mo- movies, when you look at, when you try to find a Western, uh, movie that's killing. You try to find, uh, uh, wilderness movie, it's, it's killing. When you find a regular, uh, uh, movie, it's killing, killing, killing. So, and then you supporting people who make the guns. You ma- you, you support them, and then they transport the guns into, uh, urban centers. And get in the hands of our young people who have not been given proper guidance by their own family.
Yes, you know, I'm, I'm thinking as you were talking, and you started out with moral and courage, two things together, moral courage. Moral courage to, uh, to actually obtain the ethical society, it's gonna take that, it's gonna take courage. On the part of every individual to work for that, to work to obtain. That society, you know, we had this wonderful, wonderful picture. I remember in the olden days, you came into the mosque, as it was then called, a temple even. And it had remake the world. And such a, such a bold statement, and we have it here on AM three sixty. Remaking the world, we, it's, it's, it's a purpose, it's a mission. And it's a, it's a challenge, and we, uh, and we have to embrace that challenge. To, uh, do our part to make this, make this world a better place, make this place, this world a better place. And start with our own selves, our own families, our own neighborhoods. And you, and we'll see those things begin to materialize if we start to be more responsive, more respectful. And more, and sharing, sharing these type of principles that we are talking about with our neighbors, this type of intelligentsia. This type of thinking. We have to remake the world by remaking the mindset, the mind, the language envir- creating a healthy language environment. Can help us with that, so, uh, Michael, share some thoughts if you would.
Uh, thank you, I was just thinking the saying, if you want a friend, be a friend. If you want, if you want help, be a helper, you know, be what you, what you, what you're asking for. You know, I, I hear people that are engaged in the political reality, you know, they're, they're involved in community life. And they, they, they bemoan the fact that our children have left the masjids, have left these Islamic centers. Well, the environment obviously is not one that, that, that they, that appeals to them. But that doesn't mean we should, you know, lose contact with them, there, there's a saying in, uh, the Surah. Lukman, advice to his son, I think it's, uh, thirty-one. The, uh, the chapter thirty-one. And, uh, there's advice given. Keep good company with your parents, and it tells you why, you know, your mother went through great difficulty to bring you into the world. And your father supporting him, you know, respect, respect mama, you know, respect daddy. But now, if they tell you something that goes against God's good instructions for life. Well, then you part with them, but you still keep good company, you part with that idea. And, uh, you know, we may have some relatives. That we have to love from a distance. You know, because it, it, the toxicity, you know, the negativity. But that doesn't mean that we should totally cut out, cut them off from our life, you know, uh. I had a brother that was so, when he came into the room, it looked like a black cloud came into the room, room with him. You know, and, uh, but my youngest brother, his younger brother didn't give up on him. And the, the black cloud was that he had given up on God. He was so dejected, you know, and, you know, I, I reject God. And he was going through all kinds of hell, being homeless and everything, mama, mama cut him off. But finally, with my younger brothers talking to him, telling him about God and how God operates. He, he, I got a call from this black cloud brother. Hey Mike, hey Mike, how you doing? Oh man, it's good to hear from you, man, how you doing? And, uh, you know, the, the ties of relationship are there for a reason. And God tells us in Islam to respect those ties above the tie, of, above the ties of my believing brothers and sisters. In Al Islam, and I'll stop with that.
Yeah, principles of living, principles of living is so important, you know, these are some of the things we are talking about here. And I'm glad you mentioned that, Allah encourages us to, the, not to break the family ties, the bonds of family ties. Uh, it's so important. So Professor, share some thoughts with us, we, uh, how's our time, Mike?
Yeah, we've got, we've got ten minutes, Professor.
I, I went, I, uh, I just wanted to tie in what happened when we came out of the masjid and we saw those young boys. Prior to that, I had to, I, I had to take an Uber to the masjid because, uh, I, my usual ride. Uh, I missed it, so, uh, when I got out of the Uber car, there was a brother. Uh, speaking to the ema, because the ema was outside on the sidewalk, so I walked up, uh, you know. Uh, cuz I didn't know whether he was in trouble or not when I came up on him. And the brother turned, we was, he was shaking our hands, and then he turned around and shook my hand. You know, I, I embraced him, you know, and, and you could smell he had been drinking, you know, uh, so. I, I didn't, it didn't bother me, cuz I've been around that all my life. So he went on down, I said, maybe Allah bless him to, you know, uh, because we embraced him. To, uh, remember that as someone that there's, there are people who are out here who really genuinely. Uh, uh, you know, will, will, will help him and, and, and they're sincere, so sincerity was the word. And I see the three young boys. Now, for me, I always look at everything as, as signs for me. I said, now, and, and when I went in there, there was a man who was really in a bad situation. I come out and I see these three young boys, and they were joyful, and they were, uh, uh. They, they were engaging, and they took on to, to the, to the language quick. And I said, you know, that's the way life is, and, uh, this is the way that we have to battle the influences. From the cradle to the grave, and I said, this was, this was a tremendous sign for me to see. That I connected it with what the Quran says, and what we, uh, uh, as in, in our religion, our most. That we, 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 we wanna clean up. And then have establishment so that the, the youngest, the young ones can, uh, gravitate towards. Because they were really happy to see us come, we were coming out real dressed up and everything, and they, and that impressed them, I could see it. So, uh, those are things that, uh, a quick, that was a quick, uh, a sign for me. To keep doing what we're doing and establishing, uh, a cultural influence. Because the cultural influence influences, or we call that dress in our religion. Is the thing that will always, uh, pressure on us or give us relief.
You know, uh, my, my final thoughts, I would like to remind us. Of the power of the revelation that Allah has sent to us. And how, how, it, it contains guidance for, for us. In terms of how to behave, how to think, how to structure our lives. And not to mention the, the, the Sunnah of our prophet. Who, who's, who's Sunnah is actually demonstration of how. The Quran is to be lived, the importance of that, that we had a model person. Human person that demonstrated how the Quran should be lived, and how revelation of the Quran. And I, I was thinking of a, a few, a few verses in Surah Ba Yina. I would be letting Shatun regime. They, the, the, those who disbelieve were not gonna believe until they came to them a book. A prophet reciting scripture, kept pure and holy, kept pure and correct. Kudaboom Kaayima, a book, kept, a corrected book, a book that's straight. So we, we, this, 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 this idea of the Quran. Is being for the Muslims, is, is really, is for those who are confused, more so. It's more so for them, so we should be busy about sharing this, this guidance that we have. With the public, you know, yes. So, uh, Michael, share some final thoughts if you would, please.
Yes, and you're, and you're sharing that Quranic idea, it reminds me. We have to internalize God's guidance so that we can be the walking Quran, as Prophet Muhammad represents to us. If we following him, we're supposed to model the behavior that he's modeling for us, that he represents to us. He represents the Quran being activated into his life where. His day-to-day activities, his, his, his thoughts, his thinking. All were conforming to the guidance of God. We heard Imam Muhammad tell us, you know, near the end of the life. I don't speak unless I'm speaking from scripture. Well, can we internalize that? That when we speak, we're speaking Quran, not necessarily as, as Imam De Lacy did, reciting the Arabic. But Imam Muhammad started us out with giving us the logic of the guidance. The logic in his thinking was in conformity, is in conformity with the guidance of God in the Quran. And not only that, in conformity with creation-supported logic, the creation has a logic. And he pointed that, that out to us, that learning the Quran will lead us to seeing the logic in the bigger book. Of creation, and I'll, I'll start with that, we've got, uh, about three more minutes.
Yes, and you know, I, I wanna share, I, I, I had to do that Arabic because. It reminds me of the depth of what was being said, though the mushrikina, the, the. The Jews, the Christians, and those who are mushriks, who associate things with Allah. Will, will not be able to come to guidance until they meet up with something. Pure and holy, mutahara, that, that tahara purity of scripture. You know, because the, the language has been so corrupt. That, uh, we, 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 the, the public is confused, the public is confused. Dealing with all of the symbolism and the, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, and then it gives you a book, it gives, you gotta be a book, a kitab, kudaboom. It gives, there gotta be a book, a kitab, kutaboom, kaihima, books, pure plural, kept pure and, and straight and correct. So yeah, we have to make sure we are, we are dealing with these realities and uh, and sharing those things that are precious with the public, you know, and I, I see these, I see, I'm listening to book reviews and et cetera, et cetera. And we don't, we don't see the, the appreciation for written material as much as we used to. Now everything is on the computer, we can read the Quran off the computer, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just, it's good for me, I love it because my site now won't let me enjoy picking up a good book. So Michael, please share some final thoughts and close us out so we can get out of here on time.
Got two minutes, we've got two minutes. I've turned the host, host seat over to Sister Manura. She knows how to, I, I know, but I, I don't wanna make a mistake. So we close out with a supplication to Almighty God. Oh Allah, guide us among those you've guided the right. Save us among those you save. Bless us in whatever you give us and deliver us from the harm that you judge. You judge and none can judge against you. And those whom you befriend are not disgraced, Ameen.
Ameen.
Assalamualaikum everyone.
Waalaikum assalam.
Waalaikum assalam, thank you, thank you Brother Michael, um, Rabani and Imam De Lacy, host of Prepared to Make in the Land of Planning. Thank you for a thought-provoking presentation and discussion this morning.